Board work meeting, it's Tuesday, April twenty second at noon. And we'll begin with a roll call, starting with Councilmember Bogdan.
Becky Bogdan.
Gary Garrett.
Rachel Wippel.
Catrice McHale.
George Hanley.
And we welcome Mayor Capucia as well. And other staff. We excuse Counselor Christensen this afternoon, who has some work meetings. Uh, we expect Counselor Bog, Counselor Colvin will join us shortly. It's proposed that we approve the minutes from the April sixth work meeting. Are there any requested changes? April eighth, thank you. Any changes? All right. If not, I'll declare the meeting, the minutes approved by unanimous consent. First, we have an ordinance adjusting the common boundary between Provo and Springville along fourteen hundred north. In Springville, presented by Jessica Daneki, one of our planners.
Alright, um. Oh, is this on?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Um, so this is an ordinance, you've already passed the resolution to consider the boundary line adjustment, this is just bringing the ordinance back, Springville is also bringing their ordinance to their council today to officially alter the boundary line between Provo and Springville. Um, we haven't received any written concerns or protests against this. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Jessica? I know we talked about this. Couple of weeks ago. If not, great, thank you, Jessica. We'll look forward to voting on this tonight. Next, we have a, a resolution to place eleven point one three six an eleven point one three six acre parcel of ground located on the southeast corner of Bulldog Lane and Lakeview Parkway on the surplus property list and authorize the mayor to dispose of the property, presented by our property administrator, Tara Riddle.
Good afternoon. So the property we're talking about today is located just immediately south from the Provo High School. Um, it sits on the, just below Bulldog Lane along the Lakeview Parkway. This is property that's a remnant parcel from property that we acquired for the Lakeview Parkway. Um, we've done our typical department review. First, as we mentioned, it was eleven point one three six acres, we've done our department review with our various departments and there was no future need for the property. So it's been recommended that we go ahead and put the property on the surplus property list. Now, the intent is we'll be transferring this property to a developer to use the property for workforce housing and some market housing. We're currently working on the negotiation with that, with the agreement, and that will come back to you at a later time. So this is strictly just putting the property on the surplus property list, so it's by resolution. So requesting that you consider putting that on your agenda for May sixth just to approve, putting it on the surplus property list, and then we'll bring everything back to you later. Are there any questions on the property?
Hey, this one's pretty straightforward too, thank you, Tara. There are no questions, we'll keep moving. A resolution approving the first amendment to the Lakeview Fields Development Agreement to allow updated plans, optional basements, vinyl fencing, and a separate HOA for the subject property, also presented by Jessica Donakie.
Um, so I'm just gonna provide some, some context and background to the development, and then we do have one of the developers here that can answer any additional questions about the Development Agreement Amendment. Um, but basically this area that's shown here in red, this is the part that is the Development Agreement Amendment will affect. Um, the original Development Agreement was approved back in two thousand seven, the first half has already been built. The proposed amendments have been reviewed by our CRC Committee as well as Brian, um, the one concern we got back from Public Works was language regarding basements. Uh, since this area is in high groundwater. Um, so the plans should provide information about how they will handle the groundwater, or they would like to see language specifically saying that it is not allowed. And then lastly, just for context, this is the proposed plat map for how the development should look. Going forward, are there any questions for myself or for the developer?
Counselor Bogdan.
I have a few. I'm not comfortable with this unless we have something in there, some provision in there for homeowner occupancy. I haven't seen that in there anywhere. I mean, that's been our standard and that's been our council goal, and I haven't seen that in there anywhere. Is this the same plot map that they had before?
Um, I believe they've made subtle changes to it, but it is the same number of lots and the same basic layout.
Okay, so we're not like going any denser?
No, there's no increase in density.
Okay, cause that's one concern I would have is if you went denser. I don't have any problems with the basements because we're building basements out there now. So I have no problems with that. I have no problems with scaling back the if, instead of huge houses, they're scaling back to like what eighteen hundred square feet. I mean, that's, mine's about that, that size, under two thousand, so I, I don't have any issues with that. I have not heard any issues from the neighborhood. That doesn't mean that there's not. But those would be my concerns, is if it went denser. There's no homeowner occupancy in there anywhere. And I think that needs to be addressed.
Counselor Rachel.
Yeah. Yeah, I was surprised at like the, the wide variety of housing types or like building plans that they were offering, I thought that was, was kind of interesting. And it was also fun to see how the design has updated from two thousand seven to the ones that you're planning to build today, it's like, huh, that's, that's kind of fun. I know that it can be more expensive to have more options, like to have different floor plans and everything. Um, but it can make the, the neighborhood feel nicer to have that variety, so I thought that was nice. Um. I was also just really intrigued that this was originally done in like two thousand seven, two thousand eight, and we're just now getting the, the second phase, and it makes sense that things have changed in that time. I, I don't have any objection to the proposed changes to the agreement. Um, I don't, I don't see how we could make demands on homeowner occupancy at this point in time, as I, I just don't feel like that would be appropriate at this point where we're just doing these relatively modern or modest design standard changes, because frankly, I, I don't really want them to be building the same style of houses that were approved in two thousand eight, I want them to be able to update it and and the thing that they'd asked for regarding the, the fences or basements seem reasonable based on, on the conditions that we have now. I don't, I don't wanna punish them for being with the times. That was, that was my thought on that one. Also, thanks for the, the comment on the red line, I'm like, this cannot be.
Counselor Kay.
Um, I agree that we need the updated plan to look great. More up to date or appropriate, and those, they're more what families are looking for right now. Um, but the density hasn't changed, I agree about homeownership, I see there's no reason why that can't be included. The fence, where is it, where, where is this fence supposed to be? That we're changing from wood?
Up there, sure.
Along to your house.
Or right here, we got like right here.
Oh, so just along two thousand, yeah.
Uh, hey, uh, my name's Tyler Graham, um. Yeah, so, uh, the reason we're proposing something different for the fencing is that it says that we're supposed to do like a cedar fence, but what's built is a vinyl fence and we would like to do a vinyl fence, so what we're planning on doing is a vinyl fence along the street, like what's already there, and then a masonry fence along the railroad tracks.
Oh, good, okay. So you're saying on the rest of two thousand is a vinyl fence?
Yes.
On the other property? Okay, that makes sense, and that's nice to do the masonry against the tracks.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be like a burger.
Excellent, okay. Yeah, it's, it's lovely, I think they'll do really well, I think they need to be owner occupied.
And so plat A to the west, Jessica, is that, that was the first phase?
Yeah, that was the first part. This portion right here that's already been developed.
And is there an HOA with that? I believe so, yes. And is this gonna be part of the same HOA?
I'd like to create a new HOA for this, or it's just for all intents and purposes, a whole other community and new, so.
I'm curious to know, and Becky, maybe you know, where, um, you're seeing basements. The Ivory Homes Broadview Shores are, do some of those models include basements?
Yes, and so do the ones that are south of it, well. It's, it's further south, where Beth lives and Sherry Hall Everett lives, they all have basements, and they're on the same side of Geneva. Further south a little bit.
And do they require, um?
Everything has to be built at that forty four ninety six elevation, right? Forty four ninety six? And so they usually bring, if it's below that, they usually make false basements or fuzzy basements where their basement in the front, they'll bring a filter.
Okay.
I, I could add one thing maybe though of this basement discussion, um. When we drafted this amendment, we still weren't totally sure what standards we were gonna be held to for basements, you know, every city's different, they have different rules and stuff. Since we drafted this, um, between then and now, we found out that what we're gonna be required to do in this area is just not feasible, it's not cost effective for us to do it, so we're not planning on doing any basements. And if that, so, so I feel like, you know, we can I guess I don't, I'm not sure how Provo City works, but if, if you're gonna vote on this, one thing you need to say is that we approve it and the developer just has to make it clear that we won't be doing any basements, we make that change.
If, if I could just add on to that with the conversation that I had with, uh, with Jessica. There was, um, the original amendment left some of the language in from the, from the original agreement about basements, about them actually being required, even though there was another paragraph that seemed somewhat contradictory that said notwithstanding, anyway, so I said, so I had a conversation with Jessica and said what, you know, what's the concern here? Do you want basements, do you not want basements? She repeated what she said, uh, in this meeting about Public Works having concerns about the meeting standards. And we determined that the, those standards already exist, so we just deleted the reference to the, to the basements because if, unless there is some affirmative reason to actually ban them, what, what's on the table in front of you does not require them would allow them to build them if they wanted to, but if they did want to, they would have to go through CRC and meet all the city standards in order to build them. So, so unless there's an affirmative reason to proactively ban them, even if they can meet the standards there, I don't think you need to make any changes to, to what's in front of you. Okay. Counselor Hanley.
Yeah, I'll just echo the, I think the variety of sizes is fantastic, and we, you know, we had that presentation, uh, uh, a while back, the developer who was making, uh, those projects up in, I think, Weber or somewhere uh, Weber County, but, um, the, the, the size down to sixteen hundred feet, I think, uh, square hun, square feet would be um, anyway, I think that variety of size is really key to making these, uh, affordable for purchase. Um, so I'm a, a little less worried about that because I think that's such an incredibly attractive need right now for a lot of people, and that's the best way we know, I think, to keep the price down, so I'm not, um, certainly not eager to say expand with basements and make them even bigger, because that would make them even more expensive, so, anyway.
And then I had one other question, maybe for, um, council members relative to the discussion of homeowner occupancy. I, I'm just, and this is me wondering aloud, um, even for subdivisions of homes, cause I don't remember if we had this discussion with the Buckley Draw project. Is it?
They're required to have homeownership.
Okay, so anytime, whether it's homes or condos, which makes more sense to me, it, in our best interest to look for that provision in a development agreement.
Well, we are seeing now, so homes are smaller now, as they should be, to help people buy them, but it's, they're also make some easier investment tools, right? Where people can buy three or four of them and make them just rentals, there's an investment on terms.
To an institutional investor, okay.
Which increases the price, people pay more rent than they are in mortgage.
Yeah, Counselor Bogdan.
So this too, this area here, this is close to U V U. I mean, we concentrate a lot on what's close to BYU, this is close to U V U. And we have issues with both U V U and BYU. And so I think it's in the best interest of the neighborhood, I think it's in the best interest of the city to have a provision in there, do you know what the provisions we've been saying? Okay, so a year, they live in it a year before they can rent it, and that's every turnover is south.
Yeah, so like, to be honest, um, it's not, it's not something, um, we feel really strongly about one way or, or the other, um, we're, we're not planning on like turning the corner on, uh, build to rent builder. We build and sell to the market, and our experience has been, especially with single family houses, that most of them will go to owner occupied people because the return on investment, what you have to pay for one of these relative to rent just doesn't I mean, some people do do it, I'm not saying that they don't, but so if that's what would make, you know, everybody comfortable for this, um, the one thing I would ask is could um, in other communities, we've said, you know, we'll require that, uh, percentage. So like whatever, those is like, let's say sixty percent would be owner occupied and the rest could be sold to an investor, we, I don't think that'll happen, but instead of saying one hundred percent of these have to be owner occupied, cause for instance, one thing that we do, um, we build a model home, right? And like, we usually buy the model home, um, and rent it out, like at least, anyway, but, and so from my perspective, there's reasons to not just say, in no scenario can an investor buy here, so and I guess what I'm saying, be comfortable adding a provision like that, I would just propose that it's like sixty percent will be owner occupied, and then leaves so that some could be. And, and really, uh, not even gonna target investors, we're just gonna list them for sale.
Counselor McGee.
I think more like at least eighty percent.
Yeah, the only, the only concern I have is that, I mean, I know we're, we're, we're never confident, we know who who's gonna move in, but there, there's high demand for rental houses right now for families who can't afford to buy yet. And so, uh, and especially something that might be in the smaller size range might actually be very valuable for a lot of our families who need that housing as a, as a step toward ownership at some point, so I, I'm, I'm certainly not I, I mean, and, I don't know, given, given the single family detached, uh, neighborhood and this size range, I just I'm not, I'm not overly worried about the percentage getting out of whack or that it getting overly exploited, um, so I, I'm comfortable with sixty percent, um. Maybe again for the sake of protecting, uh, the need or providing something in the market for rental for, for families. I just know that even in my own neighborhood, that's becoming, um, increasingly needed, people are renting homes because they can't afford to buy, and they're, you know, saving up money so that they can purchase, but, um, the market is just not providing even good rental opportunities for families.
One nice thing that sixty percent does as well, like, and the reason we would like to propose that is just, it would keep, you know, in terms of like HOA, right? So like, more than half would be owner occupied, which I think so the HOA and how those decisions are made, so.
So sixty percent would be thirty of the fifty, eighty percent would be forty of the fifty. So is this on our agenda for tonight?
It's, okay.
Any other, um, Counselor Bogdan?
I, I would prefer higher than sixty, if you could do higher than sixty, just because in our in our areas, investors do come in and buy these brand new homes. And they stick as many singles in there as they can, and they can rent those puppies out. Even though our laws state like three unrelated, you know, they can charge five, six, seven hundred dollars a kid. And they stack those really, really high, and they can make more housing students than they can housing them. So I would prefer that higher, especially with the proximity here of U V U. Um, just, you know, you can get that balance. I mean, it's not a hundred percent, and, and I understand that, but I would like more than sixty, if you could throw in more than sixty.
Okay, um, we could do, I mean, we could probably do seventy percent, and one thing I would, I probably should mention this, and is, I'm not even sure who's on the council here, who's the attorney, okay, that your attorney, it sounded like it, I saw it. The language, we've done this before, right? The language that we use usually says like, um, you know, we'll sell them to an owner. And then for a period of years, it needs to be sold to an owner, but that does expire, and that, that's the language we'd like to use as well, so essentially these houses aren't less valuable, right? It's like, oh, you got a not owner occupied house, basically, so if we do seventy percent, but we would like to include it in that language, so.
Well, that'll be up for, you know, the, the council to make their policy decision on that, we have standard language that we use as well, and what it requires is that during the first year of owner, of every ownership, so every time it changes hands, for the first year it may not be rented. And, and it requires, um, CCNRs and a deed restriction to be filed that, uh, prohibits that and that puts people on notice that uh, city would prosecute for rental during that period. That's our, that's our standard language.
So it doesn't make them never to be rented, so they do have that value for people as they go on a mission, or they decide they're gonna upgrade, or like over time, they can rent it out, but it keeps the institutional investors from buying them initially.
Yeah.
Especially multiple.
Yeah, that, I mean, that language sounds better than what I just proposed.
Right, I have a, a quick question on this, so if we say, you know, at least seventy percent need to be owner occupied, but we're doing deed restrictions, is that just on the plat as a whole? Because it seems like as long as no more than thirty percent. Like it could change which house is for sale and, or, yeah, how do we address that?
Well, I think we need to do two different things, cause what, either it's seventy percent can never, more than seventy percent can never be rented, and that just is one thing, or it's the whole place can't be none of them can be rented for the first year, those are, I think it's just two different options.
Yeah, that, that, you know, those
Seventy percent not renting would be forever.
Yeah, those two options would probably be the easiest draft, as far as kind of a hybrid where it's seventy percent that the one year thing applies to. But, you know, our typical CCNR and HOA language would actually address that, because it would put the the response, because a lot of HOAs do that, right? A lot of HOAs have limitations.
And they can be fierce about policing those things for themselves.
Right, right. The problem obviously becomes when the HOA isn't fierce or isn't very, very active, or uh, then how can the city get in and enforce? I think that we could actually probably uh, still do that, it, it would require some tweaks to our deed restriction, which would essentially say the city will not grant a rental dwelling license The city will not grant a rental dwelling license. Without certification from the HOA that you're under the thirty percent limit. And will prosecute anybody who rents without getting such a license. So I think we could do it, but it'd require some tweaks to our template.
Right, but the seventy percent needs to be in perpetuity.
Well, again, I think you can, I'm saying.
Wouldn't do the one year, then you can, the whole place will become. Like even in the ULCT meetings we just went to, they talked extensively about how they're, I mean, they're doing one year, they're doing five years, ten years, thirty years, like. They're doing way more years.
Right.
On a state level in other cities. I was like, oh, they're saying that's the only way to make a big difference.
Yeah, nobody set up one year.
Yeah, that was like, nobody.
Well, that's the policy. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
If you, if we wanted to do the seventy percent with the one year.
Because you don't want any ever more than seventy percent in the whole thing. To be a rent, like to be.
Right, so it it what I was just concerned about is. Like if you have thirty percent that are designated that. Will always be rentals, like we don't want that. We want people to be able to have the flexibility for their house.
See different house.
Yes.
But it can never be more than thirty.
Exactly. Okay, I think that resolves that question. That I had, so we do have a solution for it that is viable. Um, I do just want to add that councillor Bogdan brought up the proximity to to UVU and. The issues with BYU. The people who attend BYU and UVU are residents of our city. They need places to live.
Like saying that they tend to break the law for these situations.
Or or their landlords do, but I think that we we need to be cognizant that that is a huge portion of our population. And if we are trying to set up things so that they're not welcome in these areas, then we need to be more conscious about. Building areas where they are welcome, that have, you know, like the. The amenities or the transportation or the proximity that they need to their institutions.
Tons of it, tons of it.
Yeah, I I just want to be sure that our dialogue for our students and for our single people. Is welcoming because sometimes it feels exclusionary.
You're insinuating that is, when I don't think she said anything that it was. Just was rude towards them.
I'll show them that this is nowhere near a UVX route. This is nowhere near public transportation.
Right, but every time we bring up something that says we don't want students here, or students will be here. It there, it is heard by students who I represent. As antagonistic towards them, and I just. I know that you're not antagonistic towards our students, and I want to be sure that our public discourse reflects that. Respect and value to this huge part of our population.
Good point.
We we, I just know that we can be better because we like them.
Of course we all like, but you're the one insinuating that we don't like them.
Well, she made it pretty clear. It's just a matter of perception. I think we just have to be careful.
Yeah.
What we say.
We can also be honest about what's happening there too, and us being honest about what's happening, isn't being rude to a certain group of people.
Any other questions for Jessica or?
Tyler.
Counselor Bogdan.
Thank you, Tyler, for listening to my concerns and the concerns of the council and for addressing those in a brave manner. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks. This was a good discussion. I guess I just have one question, and maybe it's. This is due, but where where do we go from here, right? So like, I haven't talked about. Doing some things and making some changes. Could we have a vote on this tonight, subject to making those changes, do you feel?
I think that's what we anticipate, Tyler, several whole time and make it clear what about positions.
Our standard language uh regarding development agreements uh says authorizes the mayor to negotiate and execute a development agreement. Consistent not only with the attachment, but consistent with the proffers made in the meeting. So as long as tonight, when we're voting, we make clear what the changes are, we can make the changes after the vote.
Okay, okay, good.
And thank you, the houses look great.
Yeah, and thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Jessica. Next, we have an ordinance amending the zone map classification of real property generally located at seventeen eighty South State Street. From agriculture, A one five zone to planned industrial commercial zone. The Spring Creek neighborhood presented by Mary Barnes.
Perfect, thank you. No, this is the the prong form one. Oh, I put it in on base, but that's okay. All right, well, I'll I'll get that presentation by tonight. But um essentially, this applicant is wanting to um rezone a section. Of land down by um Treeside Charter School, if you're all aware where that is. It's a currently a vacant lot. And um currently it's zoned agricultural. And he's wanting to rezone it to planned industrial commercial in order to build a five tenant flex office warehouse. Space including one drive through tenant space um. Just, you know, further by um State Street. Let me think, what else? So.
Property is on the State Street front, it's just south of the school, but it doesn't go all the way to the intersection.
Yes. Yes, that's correct, thank you. Yeah, doesn't quite go all the way to the intersection. Anyways, um. So with this concept plan, the the planning commission approved this concept plan. And they also recommended approval of the, yeah, that's wonderful. Um, they recommended approval of the rezone, um, just kind of, they wanted to make sure that. You guys, the city council, you would feel um okay with the potential uses. Of the planned industrial commercial zone, especially in proximity to the school. We did have a neighborhood meeting on this. Uh, quite a few months ago, and during that neighborhood meeting, the um neighborhood brought up. It was, it was the neighborhood, but there was also a lot of concerned faculty and parents of the school there, um. But their main concerns were, I think, noise, traffic. Um, proximity to the school and safety of the children through pickup drop off, um. We've gone through, there's, there's gonna be, there's gonna be an access on the north right here. Um, that access to this drive aisle, right here, sorry, I did not want to touch that. Right here is um the Remington Commons Development, which is all those apartments as well up here, so it'd be. The drive out between the school and Remington Commons Development. Anyways, so there's an access there and they were concerned about that. Um, since then, we've worked with the applicant to switch, uh, well, yeah. To um make sure that he knows that um there's not gonna be, like, we don't want any traffic from. His potential development to go into the pickup drop off area, specifically while pickup drop off. Is happening, and yeah, he's um, he said that he's done this before. Um, developed next to a charter school and that charter school uses his accesses all the time. And so, you know, it's potentially something like that would happen. Another thing that was brought up is, well, I, sorry, I'm going into the concept line stuff. I'm just gonna stick with the rezone stuff. Um, the reason why we're um recommending approval for this stuff is because um this. Zone would allow for better use flexibility um in this area of State Street that has been empty for quite a few years. Um, although the PIC, the PIC zone, although it does allow industrial uses. There is still, um, it's also does allow commercial uses, and the applicant. Stated that um the building that he's wanting to build would not be able to house any of the really big manufacturing uses, so he's not. And also, he doesn't want to put anything like that there because it is so close to residential and um. And the school, he wants to put stuff there that people in the area will want to use and want to go to, um, that kind of thing. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Oh, uh, noise, I'll just quickly talk about noise. Um, we talked about that in the planning commission meeting. Um, the noise decibels for this type of project at the property line is. Um, I believe seventy-five decibels um. Between the hours of seven AM to ten PM, which is about a vacuum cleaner, and that seemed to help the planning commission is. Um, with proximity, the building will be about a hundred feet away from the school fence. Um, that doesn't. Mean the actual school building, so the school building would be even farther than that. It's gonna have ten foot landscaping buffers around it. As those transition, as it transitions into those um residential and school uses. Any questions on this?
Counselor Bogdan.
Okay, so Lisa brought up a good point about. It's great that this developer isn't going to do any industrial uses, but that doesn't mean it won't be done in the future. And the developer said that they're not gonna have any loading docks, right, correct?
Yes.
So how do they feel? I would be more comfortable if there was some some kind of agreement that there is no loading docks on this property. I think that would alleviate that concern in perpetuity, if we had that in writing. No loading docks in this parcel.
That's good to know. Um, I can email him before tonight and make sure he knows that and we can talk to him about that at council. Any other questions? Thank you for that.
Other questions for Mary?
I was at the neighborhood meeting on this one that was kind of interesting, and the neighborhood meeting was not long before the fire. That we had on the adjacent property and everything. It, yeah, it was quite a thing. So. It it was nice to be at that neighborhood meeting and hear how they were planning to address the concerns. And many of the the most um strong health concerns, um. I I, I think it was just that people didn't want it to be anything other than a field next to the school. And so I'm glad that they were able to have a field by their school for so many years. But it doesn't seem reasonable that just because they have had that, that it should always be so, especially when this looks like. A really good development that will add to this part of the city and in productive ways. Um. Yeah, so we're like, my kid is one hundred percent gonna climb over there to get to the construction site. I'm like, well. It sounds like your kid's issue. I think that's, that would be the problem if it's anything other than a field.
Anything else? Great, thank you, Mary. We'll plan to vote on this tonight then.
Awesome, thank you. And I have the next one as well, so I'll just.
Oh, great. So the um. Ordinance amending privacy code regarding permitted uses on four area ratios in the special support. Commercial zone with a citywide application.
Excellent. All right, visualize, love it. Okay. So um this includes the next item, which is a rezone for the same property. Um, so this is where it is. It's the big field um on kind of North University. Um, right north of, I think there's like a So Delicious there. Anyways, so big old field there. Um, the applicant Doug Nielsen is the one who's did all of the existing Jamestown development. He's wanting an ordinance, first of all, he's wanting an ordinance text amendment to the SSC, the Specialty Support Commercial Zone. To number one, add indoor storage units and drive-throughs to the permitted uses, and he wants to completely remove the permissible floor area ratio requirement. That's just a lot coverage requirement, um. We are redoing the city code at this point in time, um, doing a pretty big card rewrite, so it's possible that the SSC zone. Maybe um won't be included in that because it's kind of a specialty zone for just this area, um. But despite that stuff, felt like it was important to have a lot coverage requirement, just in case something comes in, you know. Just to cover all our bases essentially. So he, he said that he, his application was to completely remove it. Our recommendation was to put a thirty percent lot coverage requirement. That's the same as the SC one zone, which is the most close equivalent. Um, but the planning commission recommended um to change that to thirty-four percent. Lot coverage, so um and the reasoning behind that is that they really like his. His concept site fund, which is currently thirty-three point eight percent lot coverage. So that's why he, they changed that. Recommendation and staff is fine with that recommendation as well. Um, so this is the zone, the the rezone that he's um asking for requesting. There's that SSC zone, which is that like orangey color, and then the pink color is a professional office zone. You can see the proposed zoning map, um, he's wanting to kind of um change the PO zone to have a little bit more of that SSC. And then put LDR with low density residential in the top corner. Um, I don't know if this point works, but. In this corner up here is a single family home and here. And so that's why the LDR is being proposed there, to kind of help blend um the commercial into the existing residential. Um, and that's the general plan, um, future landings map. It shows the place as commercial.
Where's that mailbox at that they kept on saying gets taken out every time somebody turns?
That is, this road is a little bit strange, um, the whole of that was. Um, not really, but it's, it kind of, it narrows right here and there's a driveway just up the top. And there's a, um, I don't wanna touch it.
That's what it's for, you know.
It's like right, oh yeah, that's right, and so, so it's like right here. Yeah, and so that's equally, it is not the way that was left that whole block.
And that far in, that mailbox gets dinged all the time?
And yes, it's like their driveway, so if they come in, they'd be like, it's kind of strange to set up. Now, I was actually wondering that.
That's like, so are you, if he's developing that block, are you gonna put in, he said do sidewalks and everything?
Um, if that depends on, well, if there's not sidewalks there, then he does have.
I think there's sidewalks up here. I don't think there's any right here.
Yeah, that road is a problem. Like, is there gonna be gutter and sidewalk in that other side done more normal too, if we're gonna have that much more traffic?
Great question. I'm not sure um what engineering will require them, but at the planning commission meeting. Um, David Day did say that he, they're gonna look at traffic studies for this um development because of thirty-four seventy north.
Not only that, I mean, if it's that narrow, shouldn't it be wider?
It just has some safety issues because there's not sidewalks, and then it is narrow. And.
I think that's something that I would wanna know before I could even vote yes. I mean, everything looks great. It's just, that was a concern. Brought up at the neighborhood meeting last week, two weeks ago. It was also a concern brought up by planning commission. So to me, that's a major concern to me. Because those are two groups of people that have the same concerns for the same reasons.
So is that, I'm just looking at it on Google Earth, is that little slice there, did you say that's, that's private?
Yeah, well, I I'm pretty. But it kind of cuts out into thirty-four seventy.
Yeah, but then there's like a sidewalk that goes at an angle. From the street, which is, so it's a weird slice of grass with trees and nothing else. But that would give the street the width it needs. Um, yeah, there you go.
There you go, that's better.
But that's private property owned by somebody not involved in the development, right?
And that, that's not a sidewalk, that is the actual driveway.
That's a driveway?
Yeah, that's.
Okay, that's not a sidewalk.
So there is no sidewalk at all, you know, as you get closer to a hundred east.
I thought it was a sidewalk, okay.
No.
So the house is just kind of tucked behind the tree?
Yeah, like it's an original, like that's the only original house left in.
In the whole area.
So are there standards that would require the widening of that street through eminent domain or something? Oh, yeah, I mean, not standard, I mean, it it's, it's there, right? So it's. It's legacy regardless of what our standards are. Now, if we want to widen it. We can, we can exercise eminent domain and take that property away from the homeowner and purchase it from them and do what we want with it. But we have to, but the council has to decide to exercise eminent domain and the city has to pay for the property.
It'd be a huge lot. I mean, it's a very large lot. No, not the lot. We're not a house. The house is on a very large lot.
Yeah.
That's how big they were when this was originally, this to that, that was really.
I mean, I suppose an alternative would have to be widening the road on the south side.
That's what I was figuring.
That's what I was thinking too, to do like the, the development.
Since you're doing the development anyways.
Well, if we.
About right in, right out from university.
Yeah, but if we required the street to be widened, then that would. Change that square footage ratio and and everything else that we're already looking at, right?
It would, right now, the, if you could go back, if that's all right, so we could see the concept, I just have the site plan rendering.
The next slide.
Um, we're going. And. Probably a few more.
I think it might have been, yeah.
Yeah, this is great.
So if we pulled it down right now, you know, there would be um setbacks, so they would no longer meet setbacks, so he'd have to.
Come up with alternatives there, but it would, it seems like to me that.
Their driveway starts like maybe, right?
Yeah, it's mostly just affect the townhomes. Effect the townhomes.
You might need to do one less townhome.
Yeah.
To make it work long term.
I can um speak with uh, I think David Mickelson on this um before tonight to see. If. You know, what public works would think of something like.
And what are road standards? Cause this may just be people's perception, right?
Yeah.
So we need to like see what the road standards are, which we do want this new development to meet. Our current road standards.
So the only, the only traffic that would be on the narrowest part of the road would be coming from those six townhomes?
Yeah.
Yeah, that.
And it's right where they come out, the driveway.
Yes, see, it's such, the what everybody's discussion is, is that northern road right there, there's not a light on university. So everything that comes out of that drive-through, McDonald's or whatever it's gonna be. Would most likely have to take a right and go all the way around the block to hit the light to get on university.
If you go through the south part, you come out on a light.
Right.
That looks pretty easy, actually.
Yeah, and it goes, the parking lot goes through too.
Yes.
So if you're gonna go north, you turn left and go right, and if you're gonna go south, you go on to one hundred east.
Yeah, and when he, again, he did all this development, when he first did it, we required a wider a hundred east. Because it was a collector road and and um so we, I mean, I mean, he did put in that road, himself, a hundred east. So he's familiar.
It's a great development, and I wish there were more developments in the city that had this high of a design standard. I mean, it's amazing.
Especially with the infill network.
Yeah, and then it's a dirt, dirty lot right now.
Well, he he did the whole Jamestown. I mean, it's awesome.
Yeah. He, this is funny, I'll just say, he said, well, I think the storage complex. Um, it might need to be changed a little bit. Is the White House okay? And I was like, that's fine, I guess, it can look like the White House. So I'm gonna actually be white, don't worry, it'll be like forever. That's just funny.
If it is white, it'll be iconic in the city.
Yeah, that's true.
What about um ownership of those townhomes?
Great question. Um, at the planning commission meeting, he said um he's planning on renting them out. I told him. You know, kind of what council of the feelings around that. And you know, he's prepared to have that conversation tonight if you guys want to put any requirements on.
Oh, we will.
Okay, that'll be great. Any other questions for Mary? Thank you, Mary. And then um then you have the next one as well, right?
The next one is the rezone that.
Sorry, can I ask one quick question? Townhomes, I mean, so these sound like, given the design standards, they sound like they're uh like nicer. They sound like they would be appealing to. Like young professionals or smaller families.
Yeah, um, I mean, I don't, I I think they're beautiful and. I don't know what his um, what his rates would be, right? But they are.
This is like, for me, it's kind of a, it's a toss-up because I want more middle housing that's for purchase. But we also need middle housing for rent, cause there's, that's also just missing in our market. So people feel like they're either renting student apartments or houses anyway, so I don't know if that.
But with the Smith ones, we're having what? Two hundred and twenty coming on market right now. Some of them are already on market. They've already been rented out and they're all rentals. Two hundred and fifty.
Wow, that tells you how much demand there is, that's what I'm saying.
They're also gonna get a lot of money, some money.
Well, I know, but we we, I'm saying there's a housing need uh for for both, uh that I'm just.
Well, they've been, people have been begging to buy them, but they will only rent. I went and talked to them and toured them. But my guess is, George, if he is making this all high-end with all of this amazing stuff, those are gonna be high-end townhomes, I would think. I would think he wouldn't go cheap on those.
Well, I I I'm recognizing that, but I'm saying there, I think there's there's a market for both. For people, there are people who wanna purchase this kind of unit and there are people who wanna rent this kind of unit. And I don't, and I don't think, I mean, I I don't think either scenario is likely to lead to the kind of. Investor. Uh, problem that we're dealing with in other parts of the city, but maybe.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
So that takes care of both of those items then?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And I failed to welcome councillor Hoban, who is uh on, who's joining us remotely at this time, so just. Pipe in anytime councillor Hoban, Travis, if you have anything to add.
Next, we.
No, thank you.
An ordinance amending the zone map classification of real property generally located at one thirty south. Twenty fifty west from one family residential R one eight to one family residential performance development overlay presented by Dustin Wright.
Thank you very much. So this item is here on uh. West Center Street, just or just below West Center Street uh, where the applicant we've seen in recent years.
Regarding the applicant, I thought this was Steve Turley, but the the application says Tara Wilkinson.
Yeah, they're working together.
Working together, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so the northern portion of this property. That's mixed use zone that came in a little while ago. The southern portion of that same property is what uh is being proposed for this performance development. Uh PD overlay zone to be applied to. So this item and a concept plan went to planning commission. Um, planning commission denied the concept plan. Didn't find that it met the requirements for the performance development zone. And then also recommended denial for the uh for the reason to to the council, so. This item, in our general plan for this area, it calls for. Uh residential, which the property currently is, uh zone for residential. Uh, the density that is there allowed by zone currently would would fit what's called out in our general or our neighbor. Our neighborhood, I'm part of the general plan.
And what is that density?
Uh, three units per gross acre.
Okay. Do you remember, cause this is connected here, same owners, the one that that was approved by the council in front of it. It's on. Yes. I remember the cities didn't didn't suggest we approve it. And they went higher in density. Do you remember what the density was and what we put it up to?
On the northern portion, I don't.
MBR zoning, I think sixty units.
And it was originally supposed to be. Okay, and we put it up to sixty? Okay, thank you. They definitely took on that one already, like they took extra density.
Yeah, and then the intent intent there was then keep this as.
Yes.
The R one.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so. Yeah, with the current zoning in place, um, there's an overlay zone for ADUs, so it could be. Uh, help incentivize owner occupancy and have single-family homes with ADUs to help. Uh, make them more affordable. Uh, the applicant is requesting to to be able to build. A cluster of of townhomes there. Um, but like I said, the planning commission didn't approve that concept plan, so there isn't a concept plan coming along with with the rezone. Um, the other thing that was discussed at planning commission was recently we had the transfer development rights. Sending receiving zone created. Um, and it was talked about how making sure we're looking at that as. A tool to be able to move density from areas where it's not desirable in the city to an area where it is. Um, when we rezone properties without using that, then I think sometimes we're, we lose that opportunity, so.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, sorry. Um, so the transfer development rights, something that I think we can help. Uh, incentivized by not approving a rezone here, but to. You know, let them purchase those rights to, if they wanna increase density at a site like this, then that's a good option. Um, so yeah, those are kind of the basics on this one. If there's any questions that you have for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
So one question I had, Dustin, or or maybe Bill, as I read through this and saw that issues are. Are still being addressed by the coordinator review committee. Followed by recommended denial by staff and then by planning commission. Typically, don't developers along the way try to make adjustments to their project? Why would it be coming to this? Do they just wanna, they can't all the way in at this point?
So typically, we have to schedule something for planning commission until it meets the requirements of the zone they're asking for. However, anytime an applicant says, I insist on moving forward.
Okay.
We have to move them forward. They just understand that if we do that, it's gonna have a staff recommendation for denial.
Okay.
Ultimately, the planning commission agreed with that recommendation because the plan, concept plan didn't meet the requirements of the zone he's asking. So that it just didn't make sense.
Okay.
I'll stay on this, that I feel entirely comfortable accepting the recommendation of both staff and the planning commission.
Councillor Bockton?
I would agree with Rachel. I I I will vote no on this, but I also. Were they to have so much extra density that they were given up to the northern section? I don't even wanna consider them purchasing development rights. I mean, they've they've gotten more than their allowance. In my opinion. Thank you.
Other questions? Great, thank you, Dustin. We'll look forward to. Um, seeing it again tonight. Alright, um, next we have an update regarding reimagining code enforcement. Presented by Scott Johnson, our zoning administrator. Welcome, Scott.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. As you may recall, the last time we met, um, about a month ago, the request was for me to come back and talk a little bit more about. Um, the things we're doing to, and in an attempt to reimagine code enforcement in the city. Um, so I'm here to talk about a few different things that we're doing and um and give you an update on those things. Uh, first of all, uh, we've been looking at um county data. Um, in in general, speaking about trying to find rental dwelling properties that are unlicensed in the city. Um, we've had conversations about taking county data, comparing it to our data here. I've been working with our IS department to get that data and do some comparing. Um, initially, we were given a report of about forty some odd thousand lines of data to parse through. With. Very limited details as to what that really meant. Um, so we went to, back to IS and and asked for a little bit more detail. And they were able to provide us some some additional detail on uh properties that would be more relevant to us. So we were able to get that second set of data down to about eighteen thousand lines of data. Um, through that, we've parceled it down to about twelve thousand lines of data, where we've compared those properties that have. A mading address different from the property address itself, specifically looking at residential use properties. Um, we've been able to verify for sure at least six thousand of those properties have rental licenses. We're still working through the other about six to seven thousand to verify if they do or don't um. And so that's, that's kind of where we're at on that. Once we're able to verify. On those, those remaining lines of data, we'll be sending out a letter saying, hey, we understand you might be using this as a rental. Make sure you get your license, um, or let us know if you feel otherwise and and help us understand what's going on. Um, as to why you don't believe you have a need for a license. RFP, so we've, we've been talking also in the past about utilizing um. Technology to try to find these properties outside of just doing this comparative data. Um, and looking for. Programs that may be able to go out onto the internet and find properties that are being rented or being advertised as rentals. And compare that with our uh. Our records to see if there are peo- people that are advertising through various platforms. Um, that we can reach out and say, hey, you need a license. Um, I have my request for proposal drafted. Um, my initial understanding that the pro- the software program. Or the the program the city uses for pushing out those proposals. Um, was supposed to be coming online this month. Um, when I reached out to finance to find out for sure, um, it's been pushed out a little bit, so. As soon as I find out that that is up and running, we'll be able to get that RFP pushed out to get uh proposals from various. Software program developers to to see what, what type of programs they can offer to help us. Find those long-term rental um advertisements. Budget line, I know, um, this has been in part some of the discussion with the budget proposal talks going on. Um, one thing that we, that I felt would be very advantageous uh for us moving forward. Is something that we've had in the past, is in the line item for um helping us. Do the um, or front the initial costs for cleaning up a few properties. Um, meaning like vacant lots that weeds need to be done. Uh, or weeds need to be cut down, that the owners are either unwilling or unable to do it. Uh, we would clean up the property and then put a lien on the property for the cost of doing the service. Uh, we've done that in the past. Uh, we've got that line item proposed in the budget to uh to get some funds to start doing that again, moving forward. Uh, sorry, I'm gonna step back a little bit with technology. We actually had a a meeting recently with a uh a software program. Um, company that. That tracks cell phone data. Um, and our initial, when when I was told about it, thought was, well, this would be great if we could kind of. See some um data as to where, you know, potentially with people's cell phones. If you ha- if we can see properties that these group of cell phones are regularly at this particular property. That'd be great to maybe help us out with finding these rentals. Um, as we talked to the company, um, there, they have a more generalistic approach. Um, to the data, uh, there's concerns of um. Of uh, what's the, of privacy with with those individual. Cell phones, and so the, the idea of using them for for the the things that I was thinking of wasn't. Um, realistic, uh, but the city development services, other uh departments may be able to utilize their services for some other data. Understanding how people come and go from the city, um, that, you know, I know, um. Bill has asked, um. Our our economic development um director to to look more into that. Um, so if the city does end up util- utilizing that service. Um, if it's something, if we find in there something that we can utilize, that'll be a great, you know, potentially a great help for us. If there's data in there that we can utilize, but at this point, we're we're not confident, at least for our code enforcement standpoint, that there's gonna be much information. We would be able to utilize.
I'm really glad you got some, some privacy pushback on that.
Uh, yeah, yeah, they're, they're, they're very concerned about privacy and so they. They do. Uh, yeah, they they made that very clear to us, and so, which was understandable, but. Um, so infill printers, we have printers that are, my staff is able to use out in the field. We've been working on some various technical issues to be able to get them actually in practice. Um, I think we've. Crossed most, if not all of those hurdles, and they should be utilizing those now with, especially in the springtime with landscape properties. Um, or issues with landscaping on properties. Um, that's one thing for efficiency purposes, being able to at least just print out a notice right away. And go post it on the door of the property, rather than having to come back and forth and mail it out and whatnot. Um, body cameras, uh, we've placed the purchase order, they're on order, they should be coming um soon. Uh, and so as soon as we have those, we'll be getting some training to understand. Um, the various aspects of utilizing those. Public education, have talked about, you know, meeting with. Each of the neighborhoods in their neighborhood meetings. Um, and working with my team to develop the presentation to do that. I'm anticipating starting in June. Um, if not July, depending upon staff's availability to be in those meetings. Um, and then be in at least one meeting um for each neighborhood to talk about code enforcement and our. Our practices, our procedures, and help them understand and answer questions that they may have. Also with our um. PIO, uh, we've. We're we're brainstorming some different ideas to be able to utilize the city's digital media outreach to to help. Better inform the community at large regarding various aspects of code enforcement. One of our main focuses is gonna be rental dwellings and license requirements. Um, so we're just brainstorming the the right way to present that through our digital media.
Scott, I think it's great that you are doing the. County records versus like, that's such low hanging fruit. And like you said, like six to seven thousand of them, like. That's huge. So thank you so much for doing that and everything else. Sounds good and I'm glad that you are, we're not. Getting the privacy issues. Well, and this is really the kind of proactive. Stuff that's very data-driven that the council's been asking for. So thank you for. For following up and and finding ways to make it manageable because what did you say, like forty thousand lines of data at first? Yeah, that's a lot.
Yeah, cuz i- i- initially it was just simply what what parcels within the city have a mailing address different from the. Property itself, that it its own address. And so, you know, a lot of commercial use properties. Were all gathered into that, but we didn't initially have the data to say, well, this is a commercial, this is a residential. So in our second ask, they were able to parcel that down for us and let us know that there's, these were the commercial ones. These were the the residential uses. So that was a big, a big help for us to to get through a large portion of data that seemed uh, overwhelming initially. And then the last couple items that we've been working on, um, some text amendments, uh, tonight, we're gonna be. I have the item to talk about civil fines with you guys about updating that. So uh, I've got a presentation tonight on that specifically with the. A code amendment proposal. Uh, strengthening pest infestation abatement. We've had a few properties where we've. Struggled with how we address infestation of rodents and. And pests, and so we've, I've been looking at the county. Health code requirements to see how we can better strengthen our ability to enforce um. These types of issues within the city without having to rely on the county. And so I'm I'm drafting that um, ho- hoping to have that. Um, proposal ready to come to you within the next month or two. And let's see. And then, yeah, the last thing, meth testing. Um, so this is something that's a little less in my wheelhouse, but um. Recently found out that we can definitely get some support from. Provo City Police and the the county in in doing testing for potential. Meth houses or meth houses that have had meth. Um, in them and so we're we're working closely with COP. Um, when when we see issues that that may need to be addressed with this, we're we're gonna bring that up so that the county can. The county and the city police will be able to. Help step in and and do the testing and and make some requirements for abatement of those. Issues that really do affect uh. Quite often our rental. Properties.
We have a few hotels around town. Where there are problem. Comply with requirements we have. For the place to be able to go and test specific rooms for meth use. If it does positive, we can shut down at least that room and maybe the hotel. Until litigation is done. So it just helps put pressure on those problem properties to come in compliance for this.
Right. And tha- and that's a lot of the things we're doing is just. Finding ways to add additional pressure on people that are are. Either unwilling or unable to comply, uh, finding various methods to. To move forward. And that's. It for today on this. Any additional questions or or comments?
Other questions for Scott? Scott, thank you. We recognize the work that you and your staff do are so important to the quality of life in Provo and we appreciate that. We'll see you tonight on the code enforcement uh. Amendment. Right? Okay, great. Thank you. All right, next we have. A discussion regarding the recommendations of elected officials, the elected officials compensation commission presented by. Our director, Justin Harrison.
Good afternoon, council. So um, as a quick reminder, last February, um, you all. Along with the mayor made appointments to the elected officials compensation commission. Um, following those appointments, um, HR, I'll give a shout out to Daniel Softly in the back who is. Also here to answer your questions. That commission um. Met subsequently to um. Receive information and reports from HR regarding various cities. Um, comparable to Provo and the compensation for elected officials in those cities. Uh, and subsequently made recommendations. So at your last meeting two weeks ago on April eighth. Uh, the chair of that commission um, presented those recommendations. Um, and so the last. The last requirement of the council in this process. Every four years is to um. Either accept those recommendations or to to. Accept uh, a recommendation of your own. Uh, and that must be done by by June seventeenth. Um, I will. Go out there on a limb for our friends in finance, the earlier the better. They would appreciate that just for tentative budget purposes, but. Um, that is the. Um, the deadline set in ordinance by which the council must must adopt those um. Must adopt a recommendation for both council members and the mayor separately. Um, so as a reminder, those recommendations that were made by the commission um. Were to increase uh. Salary for coun- council members um. To just under twenty-nine thousand dollars a year and for the mayor, uh, just over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. Um, so just wanted to bring this back. There was some. Um, indication from council members that they'd like to have some discussion about this, so really just wanted to. To kick this off and and let you all ask any questions of of either myself or Brian or. Or Daniel and. See if, see if they're kin. Um, if there's any questions we can answer so we can get. Get you to a comfortable recommendation the next couple of weeks.
Great, thank you, Justin. Counselor's questions for Justin or Daniel? Really?
I do.
Okay.
First I do. Okay. Do we have a copy of their little recommendation that we can pull up on this screen? Well, no, that that shows the chart that was in the report that we were given last time. Um. Yes, that is it, Kevin. You are fantastic. So. The the question that I had is at one point it said. It was taking into account a cola. In a range of what, two to two point five percent? So I don't know what percentage was used for that cola. Also, if we do also vote for a cola for everyone in the city this year, I don't want us to get go- double colored. If that makes sense. So may, would you be the person to address that, Daniel?
Yeah, I can answer that. So.
Now it is.
Oh, it is. Oh, yeah, there you go. Uh, when they looked at it, there was a presumption uh, based on. Um, some. Uh, discussions with other agencies, uh, not a lot of agencies have kind of divulged for sure. Uh, what their goals are going to be. Um, but there is a. You know, some pretty good indication that it is gonna be in that two, two and a half percent range. And I think that they, when we reviewed this, it was based on the idea that um. People give a similar color to ours, which right now in the budget is two and a half percent. The salary is worthy to note though, to answer your question, Rachel, is that. Uh, because the code reads right now that the council and the mayor are subjected to the cola as well. They will get a cola in July if that goes into the budget. This amount presumes that that has already happened and presumes that this is what the median will be. After all of that has taken place. And so they did account for that cola and then set the salary afterwards. But one thing you remember here is that this this commission is also setting the salary for the next four years. The only adjustments that have been made in between these are the colas that get. Um, um, submitted every year when they when they happen. We've had years where they. They don't happen, so.
It's also important to note, remember that the salary approved as a result, uh, as a result of this process does not take effect until January.
Correct.
Yeah. So when it says the salary for Provo was the twenty-three eight fifty. Is that the amount that was set in code and doesn't account for the colas that have been put on it in subsequent years?
Yeah, twenty-three eighty is the current salary. I think lower on that chart. If you wanna pull it up a little bit. Yeah, I. Yeah, there was an amount somewhere, somewhere around here is what the salary is going to be come July. Based on the proposal. So that twenty-three eight fifty is essentially what the salary is now. If you go back to the ordinance. That was passed in twenty twenty-one, I think it's the last time we did that. I think the salary was set at twenty-one thousand. And so it's twenty-three eight fifty now because of the calls that have been approved.
All right, that was, that was what I was curious about cuz I wasn't sure if. The numbers that we were comparing were the old statutory ones for us in other cities, or if all of those salary numbers had been adjusted. With the colas that everyone's gotten.
So right now the methodology is these are current salaries for these agencies. They did a, we did a quick look at them, determined where the median would be. Then we figured out. Based on the projection of where they would be come July one, and then they made their calculation off of that.
Okay. That, that is helpful to to understand the numbers a little bit more, thank you.
And then they did the, they did the same methodology for the mayor and the council, so there's no difference.
All right. Okay, that takes care of my question.
So Daniel, one other question. You know, implied in this uh, whole discussion is the awkwardness. Council members have having to vote on their own. Rate of pay. Is there such a thing as? Um, voting. On a rate of pay that doesn't take effect until the end of your term. And I recognize how problematic that could be for human resources.
Only seven of us.
It's, um, no, they don't. The short answer is no, that's never been contemplated. Um, and obviously there is, you would have a situation where you could have. Various council members do the same job, making different things. I will say this, one of the reasons um, why this commission was created. Was to eliminate that aspect of it. Um, where you are politicizing the the compensation for the mayor, for the council. Uh, and there's a lot of good reasons why that is. It's why that the the commission is made up of Provo residents. There's a requirement they have to be in Provo. There's a vested interest in Provo. Um, it's split between the mayor and the council on on representatives. And the intent is to. Remove you from that. Awkwardness is a good word to to say it. And so in the past, you know, and that's why they're very transparent with the methodology. That they use. Um, it is a, I would say it's a very conservative approach. It's media centric. Uh, which is similar to how we do compensation in the city. And so I would, I've yet to seen a commission that is way out there. Uh, and and pushing the envelope on that. Um, this is a very uh, middle ground approach.
Here, e- even to hear you state that publicly is helpful.
Yeah, and and I'll add, without going into too many details, I've I've been around long enough where. Prior to the commission, uh, the salaries of elected officials was extremely politicized. Uh, with a downward press on compensation, uh, as you could expect. Uh, that does have an effect on the type of people that can and will run for office. Um, and you know, it's an unintended consequence because at the time you're. You know, might be considered noble, uh, but it does have an unintended consequences on on who uh, these elected officials can be. And so that's why the commission was formed to take that out of um, the awkwardness out of it and and hear what the residents say about it.
Thank you. Um, counselor.
Um, I, yeah, I just wanted to underscore that. Uh, we we did uh, vote on an increase of on a previous council that was done. In this way, we base some of the same. Innate discomfort with it, but um. But I think, I think the process gives us, uh, it it's done independently enough and it gives us a. Good data to to understand why it's reasonable. And, you know, there, I think for a long time the salary was, as you mentioned, it was suppressed to, it was twelve thousand dollars. Uh, right as I came on and it was like in suppressed nat- unnaturally low. And that really does, I think, you know, discourage some people from running if they. Uh, see that it's not really an adequate compensation for the work. So anyway. And I I'm happy to be the voter for you. I won't be, I won't be benefiting from whatever we decide, but I, anyway.
I agree with George, like you're voting for the people who can't afford to give up their time and to do that service.
Yeah.
Dramatically limit who can. You also dramatically limit what they could do on the council. If they don't, aren't being compensated for their time.
Yeah, I I've had a couple of people tell me that they'd considered running, but they just, their family can't afford. For them to take that pay cut right now. And. I mean, that's, that's a loss for our community.
Anything else for Justin or Brian?
Thank you, Justin. We'll now take a brief break and reconvene at one forty.
Recording stopped.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and reconvene our council meeting. Work session and our next presentation is regarding the fiscal twenty twenty six fiscal year budget. From fleet management presented by Warren Merritt, fleet manager.
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to talk to you. I know your. I know your time is valuable and out of respect, that would be very brief. Just wanted to start very quickly by, I think everyone in here is aware that every city is full of unsung heroes. Of course, you have your fire department, your police department risking their lives for us almost every single day. That's obvious. But you also have your streets department, storm water. You have your sewer department, water treatment. Let's not forget sanitation. And energy, of course, keeping our lights on. The list goes on and on and on. One of those unsung heroes though, that might not get a lot of recognition or might not get thought of very much is the fleet department. Without the fleet department, those unsung heroes that I just mentioned cannot be unsung heroes. If it has a windshield and four tires or even two tires or sometimes one tire. Fleet Department takes care of it. We are the reason that they can be unsung heroes. We are the reason that they are able to do their jobs. Yes, everyone plays a vital role, but if it wasn't for the fleet department keeping things up and running. The airport expansion wouldn't be taking place. Regional sports park. We are the ones that get called out in the middle of the night for blown hydraulic lines. Laying in the middle of the street in snow and ice underneath the plow truck that decided to not finish its route. And so if it sounds like I'm tooting my own horn or the horn of my department, I guess you could say I kind of am. Because I am immensely proud of my crew and what they do. Without the fleet department, many things in this city would literally grind to a halt. And so without further ado. What is fleets? Like in years past, I'll be very brief. I'll give you a brief rundown of what the fleet department is. We provide maintenance and need repairs to all the vehicles and equipment found in the fleet. We also determine what maintenance schedule should be performed for which asset by monitoring their use. Keep records on all the maintenance and repairs on every single asset. We also provide twenty four hour emergency repairs. We are on call twenty four seven, just like your police department, just like your fire department. Of course. Not going to rank us up there with how serious their job is. I wouldn't do that. But again, there are many times where we get called out because they need their vehicles. We also evaluate the condition and the value of each asset. To determine which one that we need to keep, which one we need to rotate out, which one is costing us too much money to hold on to. How can we be smart with our with our funds? We discussed with division managers, the needs of their department related to vehicle and equipment purchases. This is a big decision and it requires a lot of information from a lot of different department heads. This is not something that I do on my own. I couldn't do it on my own. So we have a committee that we'll talk about just in just a moment. That helps me to make these decisions so that their department is getting their needs met. In the best way possible. Provo City Fleet, what are our assets? What is our fleet made up of? Roughly approximately nine hundred assets. As you can see, we have just under two hundred police and fire emergency response vehicles, thirty eight dump trucks and snowplows. Just under two hundred and forty light and medium duty trucks. And then we have some of the lesser known things that we also maintain, three hundred and thirty four assets that vary from. Anything from lawn mowers and weed whackers and chainsaws. To police vehicles, of course. As well as fire truck, fire engines, heavy earth moving equipment, excavators, all of which require special training and certifications. So who is it that takes care of all this? Who is in our fleet departments? Our personnel consists of seven light and heavy duty technicians, some of them specialize in light duties, some of them specialize in heavy duty. All of our technicians cross train with each other. So that they can all learn from each other. We have one shop supervisor overseeing these technicians. We have a full time and a part time parts warehouse clerk that helps us oversee millions of dollars of parts inventory. Gone are the days. Of the cliche mechanic grease monkey. Think about how fast IT. Is trying to keep up with everything going on. Your computers are outdated a month after you get them, right? It's not very much different from our vehicles. Our technicians have to stay updated on technology and that requires constant training. Over. All of my technicians, one hundred and twenty six years combined experience. In their field. They have over fifty professional certifications and because it is ever ongoing and ever learning situation. They are constantly going to classes up to twenty five different classes a year to stay up to date with the technology. There are special certifications and training needed so you know how to work on a fire engine or a fire truck or a plow truck, the hydraulic systems. Even small engine repair can get complicated. My technicians go in to start their day and they might start working on a lawnmower and by the end of the day, they are working on a two million dollar fire engine. It just is. Just depends on what the needs are. Couple of quick statistics. We had performed over a thousand services in the last twelve months on these assets. We have responded to over five hundred and twenty one breakdowns and we have addressed over fifteen hundred different driver concerns. My shop supervisor, his office, I'm sure many of you have been there. It's a nonstop highway. All we joke that all of Provo City goes through his office and it's quite literal. If they have a flat tire or I think my tire is low, a slow start or my engine just blew up, everyone comes through his office. We see quite a few people up to over a hundred people a day will filter through his office with different concerns and he has to be able to divvy out. Which technician is available, not available. To go take care of those concerns. Fleet is no different from any other department when it comes to challenges. No one fleet included is immune to inflation, as you can see. Up on the board, I have posted. Three different kinds of vehicles that we buy on a yearly basis and as you can see from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five. The inflation numbers are there on the side, the increase. That is something that we are always trying to forecast for. We use algorithms. We use research, history trends to try and. Do the best we can to forecast in our model. What we can expect for inflation right now, as you can see. From the board, we are forecasting a four percent annual inflation rate for the vehicles coming up in twenty twenty six. Inflation, we can kind of pretty much count on. It's it's there. One thing that we are not sure of, we can only speculate is possibility of incoming tariffs. We simply do not have. Much of an idea of how to what to expect when it comes to that. I wish I could tell you that we were. More sure we had secret information, but we just don't. So that's one thing that we need to be aware of is tariffs could definitely be affecting us. We have seen it. On some of our vehicles already ordered. It was minimal, but we can expect it to go up from there. Provo City. Fleet has made tremendous progress in the last several years. Getting our fleet healthy. And when I say getting it healthy, what I mean by that is. Having vehicles that still retain their value. We are not spending more on them to keep them running and to keep them, you know, advantageous for us than their worth is. We have done very well keeping up and actually gaining ground on that. We still have room for improvement. But what is happening is many vehicles are still being operated beyond their recommended replacement. And that leads to increased maintenance costs, repairs and operational downtime. There's a very fine line to where that vehicle suddenly becomes more burdensome and more costly to own. Than it is for us to hold on to it and we are holding on to those vehicles for just a little bit too long. We are doing well. We are making ground, but we still have grounds. Back to the committee that helps me make decisions based on how to keep our fleet healthy. It's FLAC for short, F L A C. Fleet Advisory Committee. As you can see, we gather managers from these different departments. We collectively meet a few times a year. Towards the beginning of the budget year to discuss the needs of their fleet. What it is that they think that needs to be replaced. We coordinate back and forth is. Everyone comes to the table and around table and we decide what we can do, what we can't do. Decisions are made that way based off of age, mileage and cost of operation. After our committee has met this year. These are the recommendations that we are. Well, these are the things that we need. For our fleet for fiscal year. Twenty six. I won't read all of them to you, but. You do have some police vehicles, of course. We do need to update our police motorcycles. We have not purchased any motorcycles for several years. The ones that we have are definitely showing their age. Fire engines. A few of the lighter duty things and escape. A Ford Lightning, which will be electric, fully electric. The Escape will be a hybrid. And then we have a few maintenance type things, some trailers, some new riding mowers, et cetera.
Great to see that electric.
We have a, we have an electric vehicle from twenty twenty five that is coming into our fleet in about a month. We have an electric vehicle, as you just saw there, as well as five additional hybrids. And for fiscal year twenty six, we are looking for more electric. So baby steps, but it is ever in front of me. I'm always looking. At ways that we can do that. A lot of discussions happen with department heads. You need to replace this vehicle. Can it be electric? Can it be a hybrid? What are the options? It's one of the very first questions I ask and a lot of cooperation happening all the way around. It's wonderful. So I promise to be brief. That in a nutshell is my presentation. Is there any questions I might be able to answer for you?
So Warren, all of this is in your capital budget for or will be in your in your capital budget?
Yes.
Any questions for Warren or comments? Great. Thank you, Warren. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next we'll hear from Carla Gordon, a presentation regarding fiscal twenty twenty six budget for the library. Carla is the Assistant Director of Library Services. The director, that's what I thought. Yeah. I thought.
I was once the assistant. All right. Well, thank you for. Your attention and time today. Better news this year than I have last year. That's good. Just, oh, I have control. Just to start out, I wanted to give a general overview of where our budget is and kind of what we've been doing the last year. You can see the increase that you guys gave us on our property taxes, which was great. These are all of the other revenues. The one that has increased. Is this kind of gray line and that is our rentals. So by adding one additional rental space. And a thirty percent increase in. Our rental car or pricing jumped us up there and then next year. We hope to be using that attic a little bit more and also a five percent increase on our rental fees. So that gets us up a little bit higher. Everything else is kind of just holding steady.
With no decrease in in demand.
No, no. In fact, I was looking today and every Saturday through like September is booked in the ballroom. I think there was July fifth. Nobody wants to do a party on July fifth. And so if you're looking for a wedding, have it July fifth. That's open right now. Yeah, it's been really great and we're finding, we did try, we've tried some different things with the attic. It was a really slow start. But we've changed it to an hourly rental, which we hadn't in the beginning and it's starting to pick up. People are really liking it for smaller meetings. It's bigger than our meeting rooms. But smaller with better sound than the ballroom. And so people are finding it and. It's been really fun to be able to have that additional thing to offer people. Then looking at our expenses and this is not super interesting, except that you see where the two lines meet. Thank you so much. Having our expenses and our revenues meet there in the middle. I just really appreciate that. And I'm committed to keeping it that way. It feels so much better to know that if I don't spend some of my money. I'm not still in the hole. Like it just was. So stressful to have that big gap, but we appreciate that. Our personnel costs is the only thing that I put on there because everything else is pretty much the same. Our. Our expenses are staying pretty steady, but the personnel costs continue to go up. And then just to see where our fund balances are, our ending fund balance at the end of the last fiscal year was one point five million and that is, that was my goal. Worked really hard to keep it about that and talking with finance, that's a place where we want to stay. So talking to John Borget, he said that if we needed to pull money out for some of our bigger projects, as long as we kept it above one point five, they felt comfortable with that. And hopefully we're still trying to save as much as we can this year to get that balance up to do some of these other projects and hopefully by the end of this fiscal year, it'll be at one point seven. So just saving. We didn't do any out of state travel this year, like just trying to find places where we can cut here and there. It is adding up. So that was great. We did some fundraising, had some fundraising before. So we have a savings account of about forty three thousand dollars. In fundraising stuff that we'll continue to keep trying to build that. And then our legacy endowment, that two million we can pull out the. Interest and I'm spending that today on some sump pumps. So.
So that's that seventy thousand is interest. Great.
Yeah, yeah. So looking at this year, we have funded everything. We aren't asking for any money this year. I wanted to be clear about that. We did have a hundred and eight thousand dollars of increased personnel costs that we had to find elsewhere in our budget. So just that was also, we eliminated three part time positions. But with merit increase for all of the staff and then the the. Proposed COLA and study increases, that would be a hundred and eight thousand dollars that we needed to find. So we did find that there is always some new build, additional property tax revenue that we get. So finance felt comfortable with us building in fifty thousand dollars of that. Our that increased room rental for next year with the five percent increase and then using the attic a little bit more, we think it'll be about forty thousand dollars. And then with our new chiller is running much more efficiently and we have a new water heater that is running more efficiently. So together. We're projecting about a twenty thousand dollar utility. Savings with those things. We do also need to replace our boiler. Not next fiscal year, but the beginning of the next fiscal year. So before. We'll have one more winter with this one and then we'll need to replace the next one. And they say that that is usually about a thirty percent. Decrease in costs for gas, natural gas to fund that when we can replace it with something more efficient. So we're looking forward to that. But this year we will do these savings and that together covered that. Increase in personal. When we look at unmet services, things that we would like to find money for in the future, a lot of the cuts that we made last year, we would like to eventually build up again. Restoring our building and repair budgets. We've been doing okay, but. Costs continue to mount and you need to keep your building. So we're finding ways to do it now, but we'd like to replace that. We store some of our collection budgets. We cut them by ten percent, making sure that we're buying the books that we need. And digital resources and all of that. Our streaming services were probably the thing we heard from most of the cuts that we made. People missed them. They also, when we explained what happened, we had one person that was really angry about one of them and we sent her. This is, this is how many people were using this and this is what it was cost. And she replied back, you made the right choice. You're looking at a at a budget. Deficit. So. I think people understood, but that's something we would like to return.
So Carla, does that bring you back that forty thousand back to your full streaming services or is that a partial?
That would take us back. Being able to do exhibits in the attic again, things that are rented, we would like to be able to do that. We cut that this last year, which is fine. We've been. Which is fine. We've been doing local things, but it's always nice to be able to bring in professional art for people to be able to look at. Our technology budget, um we're doing fine. We would like to restore that at some point. Right now, we've been using a lot of grants to upgrade a lot of our computers. But with IMLS, the Institute of Museum and Library Services being shut down. Not sure what their status is, but a lot of their money has been pulled. And so some of those. Library services grants that we could use in the past for this type of thing. May disappear. We may get it. It's kind of up in the air at this point, but. There's always that need that's there. And then finally, I would love to have a solid hundred to two hundred thousand. Built into the budget for the historical building and some of that maintenance stuff that really needs to be done over the next few years. So we are fine. These are things that we would like to replace at some point. Um fees that we um increased this last year, there were these two teeny tiny fees. I think together with how many times we charge those fees, we might get fifty dollars more. So it's not very much, but the fee increase did better match um what the costs were. We increased our non-resident card and I looked today, we have about. Three hundred people a year that buy our annual non-resident card and about four hundred. Is it the other way around? Four hundred fifty? I think it was the other way. Four hundred fifty that do this twelve month. And about three hundred that do a six month, so they pay once or twice. Um, we tried to match it pretty close to the average homeowner's tax, what an average resident is paying. For services and our taxes did go up last year, so we increased that. We also tried to match it with what Orem is charging at their library and. They, they actually were the ones that brought this up first, that they wanted to raise it to one twenty five, so that they were matching theirs. And because we have the reciprocal agreement, we want it to be the same cost for both libraries. Um, yeah.
So Carla, um if going back to your line graph. Um it shows your fees from fiscal year twenty five, twenty six are flat. And yet you're proposing an adjustment here. So would that be reflected in the next fiscal year?
Probably I, so if it's a five dollar increase, so it's about two thousand dollars more. I'm not sure that that's gonna bump that.
That.
A whole lot.
Based on the vertical scale?
Yeah, yeah, because the other one, the other graph. Is like in hundreds of thousands, so. It's the, yeah. It's the.
And it's not, yeah, so this one down here, which is about seventy five thousand, so it might bump it up two thousand.
Okay, but not enough to register.
It's not gonna make that big of a difference, but I do, I feel really strongly that someone coming from outside our community should be paying. What the average resident is paying for the services, like that just seems like an important thing. And something that we have wanted to do. The ballroom rental, so we've increased again five percent. So last year we did a thirty percent increase. We're still at the bottom of. Rental rates for the size of rooms and things that we have. So we are raising that five percent and that's kind of talking with the board, like just making small incremental increases like that to keep us. Competitive, but on the lower end so that residents can still use it. Um so we're just bumping up the room rent, the ballroom and the attic rentals about five percent.
I agree with that Carla, because I think most residents would say that where they're paying. Taxes, that they would expect some level of access to these services, not be, not pay full market rates. But it's below, still competitive, but slightly below.
And residents also get a discount. And now I'm trying to remember if it's fifteen or twenty percent. I think it's fifteen percent that all residents get additional fifteen percent.
Okay.
Yeah. So does that include the school district? Do they get? I, I think they get a nonprofit, because there's also a nonprofit rate. That we, I would have to ask.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, if, are they a nonprofit? Yeah, I think they are. I think they are. I think we charge them the nonprofit rate.
So we have different rates for, so this is just somebody that wants to come in.
Yeah. Yeah, from maybe out of town. Um or just outside of our community, I mean, just outside of Provo, anybody else. Would have to pay this full amount.
So like if I lived in Orem and I wanted to rent the ballroom for a wedding, I would pay.
Yes.
The full amount. But if I live in Provo, want to rent the ballroom for a wedding, I'd get like a fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent. Wow.
And if I'm the school district, then I get a nonprofit rate.
I think it's thirty percent.
Oh, wow.
I think.
On those nonprofit rates, is that different for different rooms though? Like can you get the ballroom at the nonprofit rate?
Nope.
It's just the smaller rooms?
Just the smaller rooms.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, our ballroom, we're kind of protective of. Yeah. Um especially like there are free rentals as well, which a nonprofit can use, as long as it's a meeting open to the public. Meaning like doing some public good, like they get free, one free usage a month. Um like I think the bike.
Bike walk.
Bike walk, yeah, that they kind of have their meetings that are building and it's for free. So anything like that, but it's always the smaller rooms. Not.
Well, I just.
Yeah.
Is in prom at the ballroom this year?
Prom was in the mall.
Oh, okay, past tense. Prom was.
Was. I don't know. They sold out of prom tickets.
They did.
And so they came to us and wanted to sell more and we were like five hundred is like, so they rented the attic. To add space. And maybe damage some art. We're still finding what we're gonna allow in the attic and what we won't. But um I'm not sure that if they sold out that fast that we're big enough for them at this point. They might have to find another place. That's bigger because we have the five hundred people max in that room. And I'm not sure how well it worked to ship everybody extras upstairs. Anyways, yeah. Any other questions? Uh we didn't have any appropriations this year. Um I did change all of our performance measures, so these are new. They match our um. They match our. Strategic plan, sorry. So this is a lot of numbers of where we are hoping to grow and where we're really putting our focus. So making sure we have that solid financial footing, that we're enhancing our collections and services and that we're getting out in our community. As a whole are kind of some of the things that we're really looking at. And these are their numbers we are turning in with the budget. And then some of our accomplishments this last year, um I feel like we did a really good job of maintaining the quality of service. Um regardless of a decrease that we did make cuts, but I feel like other than the streaming services, people didn't. Notice them so much and we tried to keep up all of the services that we were already doing. Um we did install that new chiller and that might just be a, an accomplishment. You know, I just want it checked off my list. It's done. It's in the rearview mirror now. Um we had a grant that updated all of our wifi equipment and network, which was great. And we completed a new strategic plan for the next five years. Started renting the attic upstairs and we held our first book ball inside an auction, which was.
Profitable?
It, oh yeah, it was. We brought in about eight thousand dollars. Which for a first year fundraiser, I felt really good about. Um we're hoping to make it bigger this year. I think stuff like that, it just grows every year. And we're excited this year it'll be a. Um it'll be day after Halloween, so it'll be a big costume ball. And so we're also using um. It's not solid yet, but BYU or UVU events planning class to help us do that and get more donations and more. Things for our auction and stuff like that. So we're excited to have that grow and help us do some of the big. We use the money that we got here um to replace the blinds in our ballroom. Which if you're in there next time, take a look. They used to be the hideous one inch. Shades that were broken and half hanging down and looking terrible in our beautiful ballroom, but we have some really nice, beautiful shades that we've been able to install this year. So thanks to the money that we earned.
And I'll say I got to go to the book ball.
Yeah.
And it was fun and they had it set up with like different activities in different rooms. And by far, the most popular room was the one where they had a screen with trivia questions on it. And people were sitting at tables and doing little games, but like. That there were like ball activities for introverts, which was, was really fun.
We outfitted the attic as a quiet place to read during the dance, because that's what I always wanted. Like, yeah, go dance a couple, run upstairs, get some quiet introvert time. Anyways, it was really fun. We're hoping to do very similar things next year. Make it an event, something that people look forward to. And these are just happy numbers. This is a number, the first one is just a number of the percentage of households with an active library card. That means it's been used in the last twelve months. The other num, the other bars are average other libraries. They're usually about thirty percent. We're at forty two, which makes us so happy that there's people, not only are there cards in people's homes, which is important, but they're using them. The other number is percentage of cardholders who within the first year are still using their library cards. And again. Better than everybody else. What's important? Um, this is our, by the numbers, um just that we're busy. We've kept up. Our circulation continues to grow. It will go down next year because we counted our streaming services as some of that. But our number of checkouts in the different um media are staying the same. Or growing, which is great. And finally, we do a survey. Um we just, it's a random survey. These are just nice things. And I didn't just pick them. This actually is a really good representation. The only negative thing someone said is is they didn't like the homeless people. I have nothing. We do our best. But that is.
Is that year round Carla or more in the cold, in the cold winter days or the hot summer days?
It's year round. Actually, it's interesting that spring and fall are more of our troubled times. It's like when there's a changing of who's coming in and we have to teach them the new rules. So we're actually going through kind of a rough. Moment. Just. New people finding, you find their problems and you correct them and they usually are good for a while again. Hopefully, remember that the rule is you can't bring alcohol in and the rule is you can't, like, there's just things you can't do. And so it's kind of constantly just teaching people and hoping they can remember. So, yeah, it's year round. Oh, good. I like hearing.
Any questions for Carla? Thanks, thanks Carla.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your work. Next, we have a presentation regarding the fiscal twenty twenty six budget from Parks and Rec. Um Doug Robbins. Welcome, Doug.
Well, members of the municipal council and mayor of PC, thank you for the opportunity to present our, our budget for uh this year. Um I'm joined today with our assistant director Foster Watabi and we'll start by. Uh covering department operations with youth and adult sports. Our sports staff works very hard to ensure the programs are accessible, well organized. And responsive to the needs of families in our community. Whether it's learning the fundamentals, uh just starting out in sports or providing adults healthy outlets for healthy lifestyles. Our team is committed to delivering high quality experiences. They have no unfunded or underfunded needs or service impacts to report from, from the previous year. Payroll and operating budgets uh budget needs are currently met. No services were left unfunded or unmet. And uh we're not asking for any supplemental requests in this budget for the, for sports. Um we'll speak a little bit to fees. Uh youth and adult sports uh intend to pick up a hundred percent of direct costs. And a portion or a margin of the indirect costs. And they're targeted at adult sports at one uh hundred and fifty percent. And then uh our youth sports are targeted at twenty five. So that, that means picking up those direct costs and then an additional fifty percent for adult and then twenty five for youth. And they used to review and adjust at each fee and they're to adjust to reflect the current costs. This is an example. Of a post uh post-program analysis that our sports manager does. Uh these end up on my desk after every program. Where they compare the year before and uh the total cost of running the program, actually make adjustments for the next year. This is an example of several adult sports. Uh several of the, the rows are missing there, but it kind of shows the, the methodology that they use. To make sure that those direct costs are covered. And then also to be able to, to assess a uh a team fee based on team sizes and the characteristics of each sport. And then you see the cost recovery on there too. Uh there are no off-budget appropriations requested, no anticipated increases and no budget constraints. Will just briefly mention that uh did met, meet during the year uh. Uh with uh council member Bogdan also handling about girl softball. And we're going to bring some of that programming over to the show at four Utah parks. They could play with the Little League boys. So that's exciting. We'll be in that this uh this season.
Nice.
Uh performance measures. Uh two noteworthy ways we, we track a net promoter score. That's simply asking a question, would you recommend this program to, to a friend? And so municipal programs typically serve a wide audience with varied expectations. So a score over thirty. Typically means you're doing well, meeting community needs. So we're well over that and, and setting. Objectives to, to even exceed that. And the next would be volunteer coaches. We have over twenty foot, uh twenty, around twenty eight thousand volunteer hours per year from our volunteer coaches. There's no way. That we could provide the youth sports opportunities that we do without the good people in this community that volunteer their time. And make a difference in, in the lives of our young people. So we're always grateful for them. Some key accomplishments along that line. There's the junior jazz uh program. Just two weeks ago, our team got to go to the Delta Center and were, they were awarded with the. Junior Jazz Program of the, of the Year Award. Uh we have one of the largest junior jazz programs with, with over three thousand kids playing here in, in Provo. Uh on our, on our theme courts, yeah.
One of the, so are we, what are we, ring third? Oh, we are the ones.
We support most of their camp.
Uh again, we, we're grateful for the partnership that we have, the school district, where a lot of our games are played in local schools, where we have the. The use for use agreement at the rec center for their programs and the golf course and other places.
So now I'm gonna ask you an off topic question.
Sure.
So in those fees that you said, is that also cover like damage to shoreline from the volleyball kids? Or is that from a different line item that we take that?
Where, where we see those, yeah, that would be absorbed in.
Isn't that a fee? My, my fee next year for volleyballs can increase, huh?
Yeah.
Let's do it in not so new school then.
Right. And the next would be the Epic Sports Park. Uh opened that park in September of last year. And the local uh visitors convention bureau has calculated three point two million dollars in actual. A local spending here from outside of, of the area. So that's a huge success. We're excited about that.
Now, does that award go to a special um fund or just your general budget?
Yeah, I think we're going to deposit that and, and have it available for our youth scholarship program.
Great.
For kids that can't afford to participate.
So are we even talking more about the sports part?
Yes.
We are sure lucky, the citizens of Provo are sure lucky to have the recreation center that we do. So um our, my section's uh the Provo Recreation Center and we as well do not have any underfunded or unfunded pro um needs. Uh services are fine. The only thing we have is a small uh discount on senior uh meals. So we serve about three thousands uh seniors. Um and we, that it is subsidized, although that does, the cost recovery is built into the, into the entire. Facility of the rec center, so.
So three thousand over the cor, over a year or?
Three thousand members, so.
Okay.
And we are serving meals. On a day, yeah, pretty much daily basis.
To, to a percentage of those.
And it's very important to those, yeah.
But not all three thousand every day, right?
Not every day, right. Yeah. Um, as a result, revenue from senior programs, they don't fully cover that cost, but the gaps is, gap is subsidized by that recreation center over the operational revenues. Allowing us to continue um that high quality services that's still work for the community. Um our performance measures. Uh some highlights here, we'll skip most of them, but some of our highlights is that we've had higher than predicted uh. Recreation center memberships. So we are very close to twenty five thousand. Uh it's kind of been a benchmark for us. We want to see if we can hit that number, but membership rates are, are at an all time high. Uh approaching record breaking membership numbers. And then our cost recovery. Most everyone knows the rec center does fairly well. Uh at the Provo Rec Center, we have one of our lowest expenses. This is a, a Barker, Seacat, Ricker uh study. That we participate in on an annual basis. And we have the lowest, or very low for a facility of our size uh operational expenses. On, and on the flip side, we have very high cost recovery. So those are the two graphs. You'll see that our rec center is very low here. But on the other side, cost recover, we are very high. So we do a good job demonstrating um our strong community support. Yeah.
Your statistics on this are so awesome and they have been for years. Did you ever have other cities calling you guys, asking for advice on this?
So there is a new city that's coming up with a rec center that's very similar to ours, very into the. So there is a new city that's coming up with a rec center that's very similar to ours, very into the, to the immediate south of us, pretty close. And they, they have come in, they've met with our staff. They really enjoy what we do here at our rec center, for sure.
Do you ever get contacted by out of state people?
In two weeks, we've got a, a leadership academy with a group of people coming to tour and give a presentation on how the facility was. Was kind of originated and constructed.
Yeah.
Is it, um, is it contemplated that we could use a second one?
Interesting. That's a great question. I think we're very fiscally responsible with what we do have. Um, the question has come up even in our accreditation. Uh, we are a very large city comparatively in Utah. Um, I don't, I, we.
It's, it's one area where we were looking at in the past and it's one of the reasons for that pivot with field house fitness concept. Both the peak ice arena, kind of turn it into a field house type concept instead strictly just of an ice arena. So we've kind of tried to do that a little bit with that sports turf there and that's.
And yet the memberships are capping. So I'm just wondering if we're to the point where. Even more people would join, but there's not much room left.
Yeah.
People say that to me. They're like, oh, we should build a second one. I'm like, oh. You want to pay for it.
But if we did one on the west side and we could also have like a. A satellite branch for the library in combination with that. So you've got good community space like that would be amazing.
Well, well, we leave it up to the, to the community, right? And citizens and, and if they're willing to back that, uh, we would be interested in, in any options. We, we love the opportunity to grow and we love it. So, yeah. Any other questions, Becky?
So when is the program?
Which?
The program for?
Oh, so e- everything is back up and running now again. So we do, and obviously our costs are built in. When we do have maintenance and repairs, we try to cover those with our revenues and it is up. Correct. Yes, yes, there, there have been some, yes, yeah. So we are in constant conversation with, uh, the company Murtha. And then the C E M that we work with, the company that has installed that. So, yeah.
Yeah, you used to stagger out the replacement of those liners when they, when they time off. So we have pools open, but. Got that scheduled here in March.
Okay, so they will be done. What about all the missing tiles changing here?
Those we look at on a pretty re- fairly recent. Uh, cadence. So if you're seeing something that we haven't quite seen yet, make sure you point it out so that we can get to this. Okay, yeah. We try to get those, to get those fairly quickly. Um, yeah, okay, let's turn it over. Any other questions, Becky?
Okay, that brings us to. Uh, the Covey Center. Uh, Covey Center shows no unfunded needs at this point. Uh, could be, the budget reflects the continued focus on cost recovery. And reduction of the city subsidy to the facility. Uh, with this year, we project a subsidy reduction of si- over sixty one thousand, which will bring us just underneath that. Uh, five hundred thousand dollar threshold. So that's one move in the right direction, we think, uh, open up some concessions opportunity, of course. Be very careful with that bottled water and packaged goods. And then any revenue that we, uh, may thought that will extend, that will cover any expenditures that we use up. That we incur in, in concessions area. Uh, budget includes a modest increase. Uh, so that our general manager can attend some of the, uh, national. Gatherings of, uh, of performing artists and line up our performance schedule for next year. But those are all within the budget there. Increased efficiencies, uh, kind of mentioned that it's just aligning personnel with performances. A little bit more closely in program schedules to reduce those operating costs or how we'd be able to find these efficiencies. And then right now we're engaged in a, a visioning study. That is really looking at the Covey Center operations, exploring opportunities. And, uh, proposing, uh, maybe some, a vision for the future for community arts in Provo. And again, when, when those. Well, those findings are made and those recommendations are, are well developed, we'll be back in front of you presenting those to you as well.
So we got kind of hopefully by consultant.
Yes. That's that group. It's kind of a, uh. Kind of a three-pronged approach. They're really looking at current operations, you know, as far as Covey Center's been there. You know. Uh, let's see, since two thousand and seven, I believe. Uh, the question is, you know, how are we doing? How are our operations doing? What could we do with a proposed enhancement of the existing site? Or a potential another site, or are we just fine just the way we are and continue doing what we're doing? So we're curious as. As to those important questions and what kind of feedback we could get from that consultant. So they've been reaching out to some key stakeholders and.
Some of my feedback is, it just kind of hit me just like out of the blue. Like, what is this? I think it would have been helpful to have a email or a presentation or something before I got hit with a consultant.
Sure. Contact it. You've done a better job contacting it. But that's what that really is. It's just a visioning study.
Okay, thank you.
No decisions have made at all. Of course, that would be your, your prerogative there. Uh, Covey Center continues to. Uh, you know, be a key cultural asset and Provo strong booking rate right around ninety percent. And bringing a hundred and sixty thousand people into the downtown area every year. And then we'd like to come back also. In, you know, a few weeks and have Stephen Paul and our general manager come back and present to you our performance schedule for next year. He's, uh, made a few changes and brought, he's planning to bring us a road fund act. So we'd like to present that to you as well. Uh, next. Is our projects. Our projects team.
Was it, no, I'm sure was it a year before that we appropriated more money to the Covey for carpet replacement? And then lights was before that?
That was through the, the rap funding. I think two years ago, I think there was an appropriation for ushers.
Okay.
That I looked through the file that I believe was funded.
So we, we, we did extra, but it wasn't in this last year. I've been in long enough that time's been blurring. Okay, thanks.
Um, again, uh, we, we approach our, our parks and, and trails projects, uh, as in a pay as you go approach, which avoids some, you know, long-term debt. And bonding, um. Recreation arts and parks funding is absolutely vital to this effort as well as our development impact. Together the two. Fund ongoing, uh, park development in new areas to manage, uh, the new growth and, and provide that level of service. And rap really helps cover our existing facilities to make sure they're, they're always vibrant and current. Uh, over the past five years. We've been able to use those two funding sources, like I mentioned in the last presentation, to generate over, uh, twenty five, twenty six million dollars of outside funding. So those seed dollars are really important as matches. And, uh, I look around the room and I see people that have helped us stand up, uh, to, uh, and present to the outside groups. And help us get that kind of that funding. We should appreciate it for that.
Hey, we're gonna do a rap text again this year on the ballot, sorry?
Yep, I, I, I think the Parks and Recreation Department would definitely recommend that. We presented to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Their last board meeting, had a very hearty recommendation that we move forward and, and they've recommended that as well.
So they're all going how to promote it?
They would be, they said.
What about the arts board for the Covey? Are they also on board?
Yeah.
And they're also willing to promote it?
Yep.
Hey, because it's gonna be a lot of motion and they already have their brain, they're thinking about how to, how to promote it.
Right, to, almost to a member, they all recommended it, especially Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, all offered help out.
Okay. Thanks.
Do that. Uh, some performance measures, uh, with our projects team, just a few to highlight quickly is one's West Park. Now, the first question many have is where is West Park? It's one hundred north and about seventeen hundred east. So it's just north of the Great Steak. Sandwich restaurant there on Center Street. At about seventeen hundred west. It's a park that's right in the center of a subdiva- subdivided neighborhood that was platted, I think in nineteen forty five.
Backyards.
Right. Unfortunately, since then, there haven't been many improvements, but rap has provided an opportunity to get in there. And make a huge difference and, uh, work with the, the neighborhood there and our project team really engage with them to find out. What that, uh, what that little space needed has changed everything.
And they are very, very, very grateful and they do not want any dark park hours there and they love it and there's a ton of kids.
Huge success. The next is Rock Canyon Trailhead. Uh, again, working with the Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance. And then, uh, with our Utah County, uh, Commission. Uh, with some tourism dollars, we've been able to go in there and finish many of the improvements in the Rock Canyon, uh, Trailhead Master Plan. This is years in the making and it was so fun to have that, uh, re-grand opening. Or reopening in, uh, October of twenty four. Where we, uh, celebrated that enhanced access, safety. Enhanced parking lot, new restrooms, all the while preserving the natural beauty of that unique natural treasure there in Provo. And then the epic sports park. Uh, it's fun having that grand opening in September. Uh, which now serves as a hub for Provo Recreation Sports Programs, Competition Sports Leagues and local regional, regional tournaments.
Questions. Are we still having the playgrounds open to the public?
Yes.
Okay, and that's all on the website?
Yes.
And they pretty much know that they can come in and park?
Yeah, happy, happy to announce too that this week we've, we've finished the perimeter halfway. And so that is now complete all the way around the facility.
Oh, it is now?
Finally, we were able to finish that.
And we haven't put any barriers or anything to the parking lot that they can come in?
Fully, fully accessible.
That's awesome. Thank you. And then as far as this, are there any subsidies to the epic sports park at all?
Right now, no. We've been approaching this on a cost neutral basis. So it's. Self-funded, self, uh, you know, the revenues that we generate are gonna cover all the operations.
So all the watering that we're doing here at the park is all covered by the fees that are getting paid for. They're not coming from our taxpayers or a water fund. They're coming a hundred percent from. The people that are utilizing the park.
That's correct. It's important to realize that only half that site is, uh. Well, almost half, about forty acres of that is parking lot, non-irrigated, uh, sidewalks, asphalt and pathways. And then five and a half acres of that is zero, zero, zero escape with drip irrigation. Which really only leaves you with about fifty acres over the entire site when we finish that over here again. And with the tens of thousands of people that'll be using that, that's, that's water well use.
Oh, I have to, I have to apologize. I don't remember what kind of turf did you guys have there? I know it's some kind of special engineered turf that's like water. Drop resistant kind of turf.
It's a, it's a.
It's a hardy turf too.
Yeah, it's a high-end Kentucky blue. It's the same turf that's growing at, uh, La Velle Edmonds Stadium. And we've got all the latest state of the art, uh, irrigation control, uh, our heads are. Have distribution conformity that's, uh, industry standard. And then we've got soil mo- moisture sensors as well inside that. That provide just the amount of water that the turf needs and nothing more. So. All these things are done in the design phase to avoid any water waste there.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Doug, when this was open last year, you talked about two, uh, regional events that had been scheduled that have come and gone, I assume. Now in the second year, are there more? Those two are coming back plus more. How is your, your booking going?
That's right. Anomally well. So. We want to balance the amount of use as well as the amount of time the fields need to rest and be pristine, but we have about seven on the books, seven national tournaments. So big tournaments that will be in, including local plays. So. Last year when the park opened, it was towards the end of our recreation season for some of the kids, but now we've got them out on the fields playing. So it's been super amazing to see. So the usage of the fields have just been fun to see, yeah.
Are the tournaments, most of the regional events mostly in the fall or they be summer long?
Most will be in the next, next fiscal year. So from July on.
Okay.
Yeah, there's one coming up. I think May tenth, there's a pretty big, I, I don't know if that's national, but it's a big, it's a big test of the facility. I don't think that's a big national one, but most of the fields will be used that day.
So it's kind of a mix. This year we've had a lot of local, local tournaments.
And then your, our own city's youth leagues are using this every day, right?
Yeah, 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 like, yeah, weekends, yes, yes, yep. If you've got soccer players, we, we personally want them to come out and enjoy the field. So almost every recreational team that we have will at least play two games out there. This season, so it'll be super fun.
Right.
Yeah, it is far on the west side, so the east siders are somewhat complaining about that, but it's a phenomenal facility and worth the drive, so. Okay, Peak Ice Arena.
So wanted to add one more thing. I, I've heard from, from people who've played games on there that it's amazing. For the, the turf and everything. The only criticism that they had and they felt apologetic about bringing it. Was that it took some time to figure out where their field was. So maybe a little bit more wayfinding signs to help it be a little bit easier to find your particular field.
We're always working that in. Yeah, as you get more, I mean, it's a problem when you have fifteen fields and future twenty one fields, right? Like, which one do you go to? Uh, we're working that in. So a lot of way signing is still to come as we work out all the direction that this. If you come from the south, which we kind of anticipated everybody coming from, then all the signs are visible. But if you kind of come in from that east entrance. Signs are all facing south. So we're, we're working into it and, and figuring some things out as we go, but yeah, we'll.
Yeah, but do you guys have like one of those mall signs or the cemetery signs that say build one, two, three, four, five?
Yes.
Do you have one of those?
Yeah, we do. It's kind of in the middle and, and as people get there, they'll, they'll probably become more accustomed to it. One through ten's all on the left side, you know, and then the teens are all. On the separate side over here, so.
But is that a part of our app though too? I mean, is that something?
You can find the maps online, right? You can see them on our, on our FAQs and the other things that we have online.
Okay, so that's something that we are giving out to the public. It's just that maybe they're not.
We send them out to all the tournament hosts as well, but parents, I'm one of those guilty of that. Yeah, just not necessarily.
Don't really care until you get there.
Right, right. I didn't say that, you did, but yes. No, I'm guilty of that for sure. All right, Peak Ice Arena, any other questions? All right, so this is Provo City's Olympic facility, um, and as the, uh, announcement last year, I hope you're all excited about that. Uh, in July, on the twenty fourth, we're all, uh, made aware that we will now be the host of the twenty, uh, thirty four Olympics. So super fun and super exciting. Uh, the Peaks has made a phenomenal transition from a small subsidy that we had earlier on. Completely self-sustaining now, um, wonderful, and we have no concerns, um, going forward. Um, some of the highlights and I guess our performance measures that we have here. Uh, if you wanted to know how many ice resurfaces we do, that is also in there. Uh, public skating has been phenomenal. We, we always have great, um. Uh, support from the community and our cost recovery is over a hundred percent. So we're at about a hundred and ten percent. So we're actually putting back. And saving quite a bit for future needs that this facility will need. Obviously it's built in ninety eight, so we're what, twenty seven years in? Uh, to that facility, but to then have the Olympics come back in thirty four is super, super exciting to our town, to our city. So, um, self-sustaining, uh, public skate is super, super popular, especially during, during the winter times. Some of our key accomplishments. We, uh, obviously the hosting thirty four Olympics and then our funding committee from, from the state. So we just received about three million dollars. Um, which brings our total just shy of four million for future renovations that we're going to be doing. Uh, in preparation for that Olympics. Uh, we are converting the ice surface. So the ice sheet, which was built at the time for international standard is now, has to come down to NHL sizes. It has the NHL players that play there now. So it will be narrowed. So the ice sheet has to narrow. And then we are enhancing the locker rooms and our seating capacity. Because obviously seating capacity would be very important, uh, when the Olympics do get there. And then here is just a rendering of what it would look like for the thirty four Olympics. Yeah.
So. They're not going to rent the facility for us. We're just gonna provide it for them, right? Do we get like a kickback on ticket sales or food or?
So as part of the bid for the Olympics, we have signed our venue use agreement. And so essentially in that use agreement, it outlines our terms of what we will be doing during the Olympics and how much they will be doing. And we essentially do turn over most of the facility to them to run during the Olympics. So we'll have critical staff there and others' maintenance and facility needs are, are met. But for the mu- most part of it, we do turn that over to the Olympic Committee to run that.
So we won't get any financial benefit from doing this, just other than people staying in the city or?
The economic impact should be huge, right, to the, to the city and the people that will be coming to see that. Um, the facility upgrades though, and that's one of the beauties of this facility will last a lifetime. I mean.
Right, right. I was just trying to gauge, I mean, are we getting like food sales with this or that we're not getting any of it?
Uh, not necessarily. So I, I would have to look and see if, you know, ticket sales and what, how that's outlined. I don't think that's involved, but we have been getting support from the Olympic Committee and others in the state. As far as being able to bring our facility up and those go a long way in our facility.
Yes, good news. Just within the last week, we, uh. The state is, the state legislature has given three million dollars.
So that's in addition to the three million that we put on here, is that the three million?
That's the three billion dollars.
Will that cover the upgrades or do you, will you need that every year?
First phase.
First phase, okay.
Yeah, it's a good start.
Are we anticipating that they'll give us more?
Yeah, so to complete the renovation in totality, what we're looking at is about a twelve to fifteen million dollars in upgrades. And the way that we. And the way that we have this outlined earlier on, when Frazier came and presented to the past. Board, um, was that the state would contribute. Around eight and then the city and the county would hopefully come together and fund four. So two and two would be four. And then the city, the state would match that other four. So this initial four that we have just received um, from the legislature was. What I would say is, is a good thank you to the citizens and those that who have taken care of the facility to. Get it to at least the place where it is now. And I know the mayor and others have been up to the state legislature and they kind of recommended we come up and just. And just see what they could do for us. And so that was kind of a help. And then this going forward, this, an additional four would possibly come from the state as well as a match two and two from the, from the, um. From the state or from the city and the county. Yep.
Thanks.
Yep.
So that, that's interesting. So none of the money comes from the Olympic. None of the money comes from the Olympic. It all comes from stacked taxpayers, state and county.
Nice. Correct.
Okay.
Fresh, from what I understand.
Okay, moving on quickly, parks and grounds, uh, not a whole lot to mention here, other than just a discussion about fees quickly. The fees that we charge for pavilion rental are really just the direct costs of, of prepping. The pavilion or the space around that reservation. And so we're trying to. Try to recover those costs of just the direct costs of that cleaning, but of course not the entire cost of, of owning and managing those open spaces. So we, we track those again with our local market to make sure they're, they're in line. Also, uh, we do have a small supplemental request for three new uh, park areas that have been added to the system. Uh, this past, uh, I think it's a total of forty-eight thousand dollars just for supplies and utilities. Uh, moving on, excuse me, performance measures. Uh, trail use continues to increase. Our trail counters just continue to. To show more and more uh, people wanting access to the back country. I think we had something like a, a fa- ten thousand additional trips up Rock Canyon along this past, this past year. I'm sorry?
How do we gauge that?
Their little electronic infrared counters.
You have those?
It just, all they do is record one, one trip, one. One pass through. And the second is volunteer service. You know, Utah's the volunteer capital of the nation and, and Provost definitely the center of that culture. And so we really do benefit from thousands of people that. Again, volunteer their time to go out into these open spaces and. And uh, help us out and keep our areas pristine and clean. Grateful for them. Two recent efficiencies or improvements the team wanted to bring forward was uh, these automated trash cans. This is an experiment. My idea of this trash can will compact trash along Center Street and avoid. Uh, at least daily, if not twice daily, emptying of that trash can. Sometimes these will go a full week. Wow. Little thing, but it cuts down on labor and it's one of those efficiencies we're looking at. The next improvement or accomplishment was the paper treatment in the medium in the one hundred E squad. I think that was a huge success. It's, it's attractive. It's clean. It provides uh, much more accessible. Uh, access to vehicles out of that median. And so we've got also supplemental requests, council chooses, we could go to the next block or do multiple blocks. I think it's about ninety thousand dollars to do that with the entire block. So that's in, in the budget as well. As a request. Special events, some of our highest. Uh, rated and valued services we provide. Uh, throughout the year, uh, bringing our community together. Cemetery, again. When you, when you purchase burial rights there, you're really paying for those direct costs of the, the site. The opening and closing and then so, all the direct costs and then some indirect costs. But of course, when you're buying. A, a, a right to be interred indefinitely, there's a perpetual cost that can't be collected. It's a business model, but I'm not sure I understand fully. Of, of the revenue, fifty percent goes back to that perpetuity account. And right now the perpetuity account is, is paying off the revenue bond that paid for the expansion of the cemetery.
So my, my safety say we are not having a hundred percent cost recovery.
That's pretty safe.
It's subsidized by some kind of.
Right. Right now we average about three hundred internments a year and the ratio between traditional lawn internments and cremations continues to, to change. Nationally, right now, I believe it's sixty percent cremation. I think we're at twenty percent. We're a little bit behind. We probably will be for quite a while, but we're catching up to that. And then our burial records searches uh, will continue to increase each year and they're all accessible online. I ditched all that information. Tipping over the skull. Uh, not much to mention here. No request for funding. Um, but we, we have finished the, the golf cart building. And we wired it for a, a transition to electric cars. So we're excited about that. Just, uh, you know, quickly in summary, we've got some outstanding managers and supervisors within the Parks and Recreation Department that work hard every day. We, we, as a city have been awarded the very highest that this industry has to offer uh, in recognition for management excellence. And one, the way we freshen up that and make sure that we don't drop our standards through agency accreditation. And it's been five years since we achieved that. So we spent a year preparing for our re-accreditation audit. And just last week, I did report to you that we sat for that. And uh, the national team reviewed every single thing, I think two, seven hundred and thirty-two. Uh, areas of evidence of compliance that we had to provide. They went through everything with a fine tooth comb. They haven't let us know how we, how we scored. But I'm, I'm excited later on in the year to, to find out. How we did and what I'd really like to do, this is one of my favorite photos, you know, of my entire career. I'd love to. Achieve that re-accreditation and then return to the council with, with news of that and, and update this photo with our current team. Thank you so much for your trust, your support and everything that we do. And that's our report for this year. Any questions?
Any more questions for Parks and Rec? Thank you both for your presentation and your great work. And well done. You have a lot on your plate. Our, our last fiscal year budget presentation will be by uh, the, for the police department presented by Chief Troy Beebe. Chief, welcome. You're, you are up. Yes.
Asked Doug if he warmed you up for me. He said he did. Great. Um, thank you for the opportunity to present our budget presentation. Um, the police department. Uh, is amazing. I work with some pretty amazing people. Uh, Captain Taylor and I will tag team. Uh, this presentation and uh, we'll get started. We work and strive to accomplish this daily. And uh, when we get to some of our accomplishments, um, I think you'll see that the police departments are serving the public. Um, very well. The, the key to. Our success is our people. And uh, where we've been doing our badge presentations and, and bringing our new people to, before you, uh, doing a little bit of a bio and showing you who. We're hiring. We go through a pretty extensive. Process to. Select. People with honor. To serve. Our community. And uh, I'm very proud of them. They do a very good job. Uh, that's a key portion of, of meeting our, our, our mission is having the right people. Engaging in the community, uh, you'll also see where we've. We've really strived to get out, get out of our vehicles and. Work with the, the public, work with our community. Um, currently we're doing cops and barbers. Uh, again, we're up. And it is. It's very well received. It's awesome. Uh, third graders catching their first fish. The first night we had. Um, I think it was sixteen kids that caught their first fish. Uh, all while learning. Uh, the police are not. Bad people. They're the people that are there for you to help you, to serve. And to, that it's called fishing, not catching. We're re. So it's a, it's a awesome program. We're also doing many other programs and maybe skipping ahead too much, but we. Our department and our culture and everything that we're, we're working towards is based upon our mission. Some key accomplishments. If I was to, to just outline this boxes, top. Layer of boxes is utilizing technology. Uh, as a force multiplier in our organization. Uh, it is really utilizing the people that we have, the good people that we have and. Making their job easier. Uh, shortening investigations, making investigations more thorough and serving victims. In a more professional manner. And all of these things along the top of that, top row is, is doing that. The real-time. Crime center using block and the license plate readers all responsibly and ethically. Uh, are saving time. And keeping officers active and proactive on the street. Um, the next lines as you see across, they're just, uh. They're truly. Showing. What the officers are doing in our community. They're active. Uh, and they're enforcing law. Uh, and then the next two lines, the bottom two lines, if you go across are. Significant cases that we've had in Provo. And have taken extensive amount of time to investigate, to look at.
I was actually wondering about this. The, um, the massage parlors, were they trafficked women? Do we, was there an element of trafficking there?
There is. Yes. And uh, they, that is just a, a. That's a portion of an investigation that's ongoing with the, the AG's office. And so they're, they're continuing those, those efforts. The other portion that I would say with regard to that specific case is, uh, we're not, we're not just targeting. That we're targeting the Johns as well. And uh, yeah, not, not in Provo. So we'll, we'll continue those efforts. And. Some of these cases are, are, are amazing. Closing a forty-three-year-old missing person case of, of. Robbie Peg. Um, there's an extensive time and efforts to go into that. There's a reason it took forty-three years. Um, and. Very meaningful to get it. Get it wrapped up the way we did. Here's our supplemental request from last year. Um, thank you very much for the two officer positions. Uh, the language incentive is in full. Uh, working order. And uh, the increases in the animal shelter. And uh, what's the, one that we came before you also was the increase uh, in the Utah County Major Crimes Task Force. We. Talked to you about a real-time crime center and cell phones increases. And funded, you can see on the side. And funded has some impacts on our operation, uh, operational budget. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for letting me be here. Captain Brian Taylor, I'd like to go through some of our specific budget requests this year for your benefit. There are several. They break down into two categories though. Um, operation, rightsizing of operational budgets. And victim advocacy. These are the two categories we'll talk about. And I'll start with, um, budget rightsizing. Important changes to budget processes last year, closed department access to payroll attrition savings. For as long as either the chief or I have been here, um, this budget authority has been used to fund unfunded operational needs in the police department. When it was closed to us, the finance department, leaders in finance. Said to us, we'll use FY twenty-five to understand your budget rightsizing needs. And so the requests that we present today are based on what we've seen this year. Really focused down our requests into four areas. They are the personal protective equipment budget. Needs to be increased in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. This budget is used to buy. Personal protective armor that patrol officers wear every day. They are rotated on a five-year basis, just the constant wear and moving of those fibers and the. Sweat, unpleasant thing to talk about in council, but degrades. It needs to be. Replaced on a five-year ba- on a five-year basis. They are expensive and it's important. The next one is the cell phone budget. It does more than just pay for cell phones. It pays for network connectivity and patrol cars as well. So that that patrol car can be a mobile information center. Contract increases have, uh, left us facing a twenty thousand nine hundred dollar shortfall next year that we anticipate we need to pay for. The ammunition budget. Um, this, we used to just use this to buy ammunition as the name suggests. Again, because budget rules have changed, we no longer have payroll attrition savings. We used to. Use that access to do things like buy less lethal munitions. I don't know if you're aware, but. About once a year in this city, we save somebody's life by using a beanbag. Projectile out of a shotgun rather than a firearm. Or tasers or pepper balls or a chemical spray. These are all lifesaving tools. I call them lifesaving tools. If you're on the receiving end of one of these, it just feels like a bad day. But they, they give officers options to intervene and de-escalate people who will, will not be de-escalated any, any, any other way. But that using lethal force. The strain on this budget has increased to the amount of thirty thousand dollars. The last budget that we're asking for is, uh, the supplies budget. This is really a poorly labeled budget. It pays for a lot. Crossing guard equipment, cones. Nick, um, test kits that we use to do field tests on narcotics. Um, every oddball piece of equipment in the department except for uniforms and weapons comes out of the supplies budget. There's a forty thousand dollar shortfall on that budget. Honor guard, motor, I've listed some things on there that you can see. So our budget rightsizing requests are very much more focused than they were last year. Uh, with finances help, we have really drilled down on where, where we are actually short. This is it. Okay. Victim advocacy. This is a, uh, an important topic to me. I spent, uh, an important portion of my career, um, working. In, uh, special victims investigations. And I know very well what victim advocates do and how important they are. Provo City, like many other cities. Funds a victim advocacy operation. With a patchwork of funding sources, including federal grant funding. The federal grant funding outlook generally, but specifically in the Volca grant is diminishing. Last year, Volca, well, Volca, for example, used to pay for. Payroll and supplies and training for these people. It's been contained to just payroll and now this year it is. Um, seventy-five percent of the pay for two infected employees. So we have one point five FTEs in this office who are. Um, now exposed to a seventy-five percent funding allocation in the grant. Next year rather than a one hundred percent. This is a forty thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollar shortfall on their pay. Without covering this, we lose the ability to manage a fully staffed. And really fully staffed is a rosy way to say it. A minimally staffed. Victim advocacy operation, council.
Do you also not get the grant because you can't, if you don't match the twenty-five?
No, they, well. They will. Pay us that, but we will not be able to retain them if we don't pay them. So we will be left with this money that we have to return. I, I think that answers your question.
Yes. And did some of the, did it come up in the CBDG funds for the forty grand? Did that come up at all?
I don't know that.
So I believe you applied for it.
I don't have a fulsome answer to that.
Part-time position.
That was another part-time position?
By a part-time position that's separate.
Okay. But it was a victim advocacy for that.
Right. Yeah, I I mentioned that the victim advocacy office is funded by a patchwork of sources. There's more than one grant there. This grant pays for one and a half of the four people in that office. That's really the, that's the presentation. Um rightsizing budget budget operations, those four budget categories, one hundred fifteen thousand and nine hundred dollars. Victim advocacy, forty thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars. That's our ask. We we greatly respect and appreciate the service that council does to balance the fiscal priorities of the city, sensitive to that and grateful for your service and your consideration.
Any questions for Chief Levy or Brian? Yes, Councilor Holman.
Not so much a question, just a comment of, you know, great job, kind of. We know that there would be some fallout from taking away the what are we calling it, the
Personnel funds.
The personnel funds, so. But, you know, to come back and say, all right, here's here's the real number that we need. I think that's okay. And uh so good job prioritizing what's important, and I think I think these things look like good use of of funds and appreciate all you guys do, and we know you run efficient, efficient shop there.
Councilor Winkle.
Yes, and I I want to thank you for continuing to give priority to the victims' advocates' positions. Um I end up working with both victims' advocates and with clients who need their services, and it is it is an essential, essential service. So thank you for continuing to support those positions even as we're seeing decreases in outside funding for them. Thank you.
And Chief, I'm just scrolling back to we, they presented earlier to us, the fleet group, who I know represent you in your um vehicle needs. And they um are including in their budget eighteen police vehicles, non-patrol and four police motorcycles. So I assume that comes through you and send on them or?
Yes, there's there's certain statistics um in in uh in our our overall report, I lose lots of words all of a sudden, or year-end report that uh shows the statistics that we we have reduced traffic accidents by twenty-one percent due to reactivating our our traffic team. So actually, having them dedicated to traffic, not used as part of our our personnel and patrol has been very effective. We still have traffic accidents every day, but that that reduction of having those officers out there has been a
Could you explain that better? Like, when did you start doing that and what was the change and what was the impetus of the change?
Um so we've been working very hard to reduce the amount of attrition that we have in in our patrol division and keeping officers there. We're hiring as fast as we can and and the training issues that we've that have come up. I've explained many times to to this group. Uh and so we're trying to get ahead of that, the positive side of attrition. And we are working feverishly to keep our numbers up. When our numbers are up, uh then the traffic team is able to do what they're utilized to do, go out and enforce traffic violations. And with enforcement uh comes compliance, it comes there when there's officers out there. Uh and they're making contacts, making very good um positive contacts with people, sometimes not positive. But it is a change in behavior. And when these changes in behavior occur, we don't have as many traffic accidents. We actually have officers in positions that are hotspots uh for traffic accidents, and that reduces the amount. As far as the timeframe goes, I I would say in this last year is when we're able to, we still will pull them if necessary, we'll pull those traffic guys off and put them into patrol to to take calls for service. Uh but with done a good job of keeping up on the numbers and therefore able to utilize them the way they're supposed to. So what brought me to that was the the four high-performance BMW motorcycles that these guys drive, which is exciting in a recruiting portion rather than a Harley. I mean, I'm a BMW guy as well. You go, I'm gonna Captain Taylor and I are fully vested, but uh those guys look sharp. They look very good and uh when they look good, they perform good.
Thank you, Chief Levy and Brian. Thank you very much for your presentation today. We'll now take a break
Recording in progress.
Okay, we'll reconvene our council work session this afternoon. We welcome. We welcome everyone back and especially Melissa McNally will be our next presenter. Next, we have a presentation regarding the 2025 through 29. Consolidated Plan and Year One Annual Action Plan presented by Director McNally from the RDA. Welcome, Melissa.
Thank you. Okay, so I thought as a reminder, so even though it says annual action plan, we are actually talking about the consolidated plan, so apologies for that. Um, and just as a reminder, I kind of wanted to walk everyone through the consolidated planning process. So we start the start on the bottom kind of kicks off. Every five years, we put together a plan that kind of dictates what we're going to prioritize in our funding that we get from our home programs and we get. Home and CDG, sorry, our HUD programs, which are home and CDPG. So last fall, we um, we had a a public hearing to invite people to give input on what they would like to see prioritized in the consolidated plan. And we did surveys, we heard from service providers and and. We coordinated with with council on some of those priorities as well. So um, let's just kind of go, I'll jump back to this when we get there, but just kind of go through this for a second. So through the through our um, through our outreach, both through our public outreach, our surveys, through our. Housing and homeless needs assessment and our market housing market analysis, we had a consultant prepare those. Reports for us to come up with some of the two community needs that um. That kind of fleshed out, so just to go over some of those highlights, some of the most needed housing. Of course dominates is number one, just various various types of housing affordable home buyer rentals. Um, housing for special needs populations like the um. Individuals with disabilities and and our seniors, also economic development, both in supporting um higher income. Uh, jobs and um. And small business development and and place spaces for our small businesses here in our community. Um, infrastructure improvements, we we know that we need a lot of sidewalks need replacing here in Provo. Um, especially sidewalks with ADA accessibility. And also there are various services identified for low income households. Um, specifically health care counseling for both victims of child abuse and domestic violence. Um, and food insecurity assistance as well. And some of the gaps that were identified that we will be working on to address also as far as our services. Um, there are limited grants and fundings um. Available for all of our needs and currently a lack of capacity to serve. Um, everyone that needs those services, unfortunately, we've seen. The need for a lot of these services grow in the last several years, and so we're looking for both. Uh, increased capacity and facilities for different things as well as manpower for different things. And then one of the other things um. That came up as as kind of an impediment to the services or regulatory um challenges that come with any of the government funding. So we have, after all of that, we came up with our consolidated plan funding priorities, so these will be the priorities for the 25. Through the 2029 years for all of the HUD funding that we that we receive. Um, so this is based on the community surveys and the the priorities that the council identified. When we went through that exercise last November. Um. So, let's see. Um. Am I jumping ahead, I'm jumping ahead a little, let's go back to that. Okay, so as part of the consolidated plan um process. And writing it for the next five years, we're also incorporating the annual action plan. So um, in the annual action plan process, we had our input, we had our funding. Um, notices and our applications came in and the projects were heard by our. Different committees um. And they made the scores and then they have the funding recommendations, which is the next part that I will be presenting to you. You have any questions so far, I'm kind of like going through this, but I want to make sure that that everyone is. Clear on the process, okay. So through our annual action plan, these were, we used these funding priorities to help. Um, to help guide the citizen committees in in making the funding recommendations and these. Um, so this was part of our regional funding, we get together with Utah County and Orem City. Um, to collaborate and that way when we have our these public service entities that come in for funding. It's a more streamlined process, they can do one application and all three of us are there to hear us. To, excuse me, to hear them and we all have representatives on that regional committee. So based on that, um, let's see. These, I think the ones in green are the recommendations that Provo will be funding um and those. We decide on who funds what based on the percentage of the population that is served um. From each community. So here's like, here's the breakdown of who is funding what organization and kind of the. The scoring and the percentage of the population that is of each community that is served, yes, George.
Just explain what the kids on the move is that lives for us now.
Yeah, they, the funding project that they brought was really not determined, was determined to be really not eligible, they wanted to do a study to look into doing. Um, the feasibility of other programs and that's not really what our funding is for, so it was decided not to fund them. Are there any other questions at this point? Okay. Okay, so then we have our Provo only applications and those are primarily um. Organizations and Provo only capital projects, so. That is the top portion and the public services, so these are public services that are primarily serve Provo residents. Um. So here are the the funding recommendation of the committee, there were a couple of organizations or a couple of um. Projects that didn't get funding just because we have really limited funding, so the committee. Um, debated quite a bit to to narrow it down to the funding that's here and. Um, and anything with an asterisk, these colored projects, those are the contingencies in case we get, because these are all. Um, based on estimates, we kind of estimate based on what HUD awarded us last year. So if we get more or less funding, this kind of indicates where the more or less is going to take the hit, so. Did you have a question, Barry?
So Melissa, I see a couple of organizations on there, there's the column. Where it has their request followed by the lowest amount they could accept to meet their needs. And then later is the recommendation, which is in which in two cases is less than the lowest amount they said would be acceptable.
Yeah.
Does that mean they are saying if we can't get this full funding? Reallocate those funds or will they just do a partial project?
No, and that's a, that's a great question, that is something that comes up in the committee meetings, they're asked, you know, that that's brought up. And most people will say really any amount is great, especially. Uh, when they know how limited the funding is, so that's where some of those cases you can see those are, you know, the. A lot less than.
Yeah.
Than the the.
Lowest.
Than the lowest amount, thank you, I think on some of these, like the the Boys and Girls Club specifically, they have. Um, they're doing some some interior work, so they had had like a breakdown in their budget. So the committee could see like maybe we can't give them the hundred thousand, but this will pay for these things in their budget, so.
Instead, okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions on that? Okay, then we have our home consortium, so the the home dollars that we get are, they're all for different. Um, housing uh. Solutions and Provo City is the the lead entity, so we're the, we're the head of the consortium and the consortium funds come to us. Uh, we're in charge of all the reporting to HUD, but those dollars are are for all of the members, which is. Um, most of Utah County, there's a, there's a few municipalities that don't participate, but. So the way that works is we have consortium members come and hear those home presentations and. And it works pretty much the same as CDPG, the the organizations come, they make their presentation. And they are ranked and reviewed by the committee members and then they allocate out the funding. And they also have a contingency plan, whether we get more or less funding than is than we expect. Um, are there any questions on the home portion? Okay. So overall, this is the, this is the proposed budget of each of both CDBG and home, just so that you can see. Kind of how everything is is broken out, we have our our admin that that pays our salary. We have our 108 loan that we are paying on and that was, if anyone's unfamiliar with that. We borrow against future CDBG awards for economic development projects and so we used a 108 loan out. To help take infrastructure out to the airport, um, so we get um. Accomplishments are, and that's like our measurement to have to say this is, this is the economic good that this loan is doing for our city. And there we get um. Um, new job reports from Duncan Aviation and it's been pretty impressive, the the jobs that that has brought into Provo. Um, and then we have what's our, what's available for our for our public service projects. Um, our Provo only and then the regional amount and then we have for our capital projects. Um, unfortunately, that 108 loan does bite in a a lot to our what's available for our capital projects, so. Um, we're halfway done paying that off a little. I think we're halfway through the 10 year, it's a 10 year repayment period, so we're trying to pay that off as quickly as possible, but um. Yeah, we're just going to have to deal with that for a few more years, and then we have our home um. Budget over here, again, our admin that helps pay for for all of our salaries and. We are required to set aside funding for a community housing development organization, so that's what that that CHODO stands for. Um, so that's that amount that will go to, it's for rural housing is our, is the total. Um so that's that uh amount that will go to, um it's for rural housing is our, is the total that we're currently working with. Um and then we have two down payment assistance programs that are, that are getting the funding um for this year. Are there any questions about the budgets at all? So, um. Just to go back up to the. Go back to our little low chart, sorry. Okay, so this evening I'll do um. A public hearing that will open a public comment period and this is for the consolidated plan and the annual action plan. This is just. Inviting feedback from the public. Um the annual action plan is available on our website. We have it posted there with a little comment box. So that people can go, just click on the link to pull up the the plans. And then the comment box um that comes right to me. Um it makes it super easy to just fill out and say. Hey, I don't like this about the planner. I do like this about the planner. Um so that's there. And the public comment period will go until June sixth. So that gives people plenty of time to review that, to give feedback. Um they're welcome to um come and view it in developments. Development Services Office to um email me or to mail me. Um in the Development Services Office and give um whatever, whatever feedback they have on the plan. Um, guys, have any questions on any of that process or the budget or anything? Yes, Rachel.
So I was just reading through your supporting documents um and one question I had was about the needs assessment overview. From twenty nineteen, how often is that housing and homeless needs assessment done?
Um, we just had it done last fall.
Okay, so when will we get the the report and the data from that?
So that was um made available last fall. Is it, do we have a link on the website? There should be a link.
Well, I was just wondering because you know, all of these references were to that twenty nineteen one and I thought we had something newer and so.
We do, so. Let me, let me look at that.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
It is helpful to go back to twenty nineteen and see what the status was then and many of the things are updated numbers, but I'm like. I I thought we had a whole new assessment, so it's helpful to see the change.
Okay, oh, maybe when I'm done, can I look at what you're looking at so that I?
Yes.
That would be so great because there are updated, there are updated reports that should be on our website. They're massive.
Um, they're hard to upload.
Okay.
Because they are.
Yeah.
They're massive. Okay, I I was just curious about that, but I I appreciate. All of this work. I hope that we're able to keep having these funds come in so that we can use them to benefit the community.
Okay, are you looking at that? You're not looking at the current consolidated plan that's on, that's on the community programs website, are you?
I'm looking at what was loaded into OnBase Consolidated Plan and this is page thirty two.
Okay.
But it also had an expiration date below this past, like I don't know if it was. Yeah.
And that's just because, yeah, it's because I, it's, yeah, it's uploaded directly from the, the template is direct. Is uploaded directly from the HUD website, so that's whatever HUD has in there.
Yeah, I figured.
Um, yeah, I'll, let me go take a look at that. So like, did the right? Hopefully the right plan. You're looking at the right plan. Is it, is it labeled the two twenty five, twenty nine?
Scroll up.
I'm so sorry.
Oh, no, no, I think you're good. So the document I'm looking at is executive summary page. It's got two hundred pages.
That sounds about right.
Yeah.
It says the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty.
Okay, alright, yeah, so let me just double check on that, cause it should be. We do, we have updated things. The the updated report, reports that it's referencing are available.
Okay.
On our, on the website as well, so.
Um, it is a lot to read, I'm sure.
It is a lot, yeah, yeah. So my team did a great job extrapolating some of the information from those two reports and putting it into the consolidated plan. Cause it is a lot of information and it's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's extremely useful information, though.
Good.
Oh, yeah, well, and we're talking about like the need for rental and for for ownership markets and. You know, we built more than the housing it said we needed in twenty nineteen and the demand has only grown. And so that's why it was really useful to have this twenty nineteen information in there.
Mm hmm.
And that's also why I wanted more current information to, and maybe I just.
No.
Haven't read all of it.
You know, I just, I'll go back, I'll go through and double check and make sure that everything is. Is correct and then I will send another um, I'll send another version. If it, if it needs correction, I'll.
Or or addition. It doesn't have to stop at a hundred and ninety nine pages, right?
Let's just add a few more, no big deal. Yeah.
I mean, that was, that was the question, but yeah, it's super, super important or useful information. Um, that's helpful for me to have a sense of what's going on in our community and what our needs are. It's very good.
Yeah, a lot of need. Unfortunately, okay, so. If you guys don't have any questions, any more questions, then.
We'll look forward to your presentation tonight and Melissa.
Yeah.
And special thanks to your committee members who reviewed all of these projects and put the recommendation together.
Yeah.
I don't know if some will come tonight to see the presentation.
Um, I don't know that they will. Um, they. I do think they're planning on coming to the one in June, cause that's the one where I'll ask council to make a, to make a motion to accept.
Okay, this is just the public hearing.
Yeah, this is just a public hearing to say, hey, does anyone have anything to say about this yet at this point, so, yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Melissa.
I do have another item, so I'll just like.
Oh.
Just hang out here for a minute.
Okay, and actually that's part of, it's an agenda, so we will adjourn the municipal council. Meeting if there's no objection and and reconvene as the RDA governing board by unanimous agreement.
Welcome to the RDA governing board. So our item, a resolution approving the memorandum of agreement between the Provo City Redevelopment. And BCP Ironton LLC for property located within the Mountain Vista Business Park. Oh, thank you, thank you, Gary. Alright, this will be presented by Melissa McNally, our RDA director.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm asking the council, so this will come before you in a couple of weeks, but I'm asking to approve a resolution for this agreement. Um, back in twenty sixteen, the RDA made. Or had an agreement with Hall Labs or I think it's, they're called New Vista um. New, I don't think I have that on here. Anyway, um. It's a, a couple of entities um by, by the Hall Company. And uh in in that agreement, there were several parcels. In the Mountain Vista Vis- Business Park and if you are. A familiar or unfamiliar, um it used to be uh an old iron um. Iron Works or Iron Mill out there, so um. A lot of work was done to rehab the land. There's some stuff out there still. I guess it's the old furnace site. Uh takes up a lot of that, that, those parcels. Um so a deal was made with with Hall Property Holdings. Um to purchase um, I think it might have been six parcels of land and. In lieu of cash, they agreed to um, or we agreed to let them uh remediate the property. Uh so that it could be cleaned up and used um. For other businesses want to locate out in the mountain business Vista Business Park. Um so Hall has done a lot of remediation um. And a few years ago, they didn't, they um, it was no longer feasible to keep doing the remediation. And so they came to us because they wanted to sell. Um and then we decided that that's, that's fine. But we want to make sure that property continues to be remediated. Um so. Uh they put together this memorandum of agreement so that they can sell the property and the new buyer will. Assume that um obligation and they'll continue to um remediate and those um. The invoices for remediation will go against the sale price remaining on the, on the property. Um, so that is what I'm, I'm asking, yes, Caprice.
I'm curious, like normally with a resale, um you know, prices have gone up a ton. So why would there not be a new purchase price associated that they can remediate from?
I think just because the burden of cleaning up the land out there, we wanted to um. Just extend the same um, the same price to the new buyer and not. And let Hall Labs just walk away with um the amount that they, that they paid into it to remediate. So they're not getting the appreciation of the value, cause the, the, cause the land is in their name.
Well, they're not getting anything.
But we have a lien on it, so they're, so from their buyer, they're getting the reimbursement of the portion of the. The loan presumably that was paid off through their remediation efforts.
So they paid nothing for it and they're getting paid back what they put into it that was supposed to be for the purchase price. Okay, so they're walking away even.
Yeah. What was that? Right, but they're not paying for that, they got it back.
That's gonna be, so I have a couple of concerns, Ms. Caprice, I mean, the cost to remediate that, like Rachel said, has gone up. And so we're left holding. The portion of that and there's no sunset clause on this, like you have to get this done for five years.
There is actually, if you look in the memorandum of agreement, it's by twenty twenty eight.
Oh, good. Okay, so they have another three years to get it done?
Yes.
And what happens in three years that doesn't get done?
Um then we could foreclose on the property. We do have a trustee against it. We could call that in.
I'm all for cleaning it up, but I don't know that I'm comfortable with the terms, how they say. Because they are. What, this was something done in twenty seventeen?
Twenty twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
So it's like eight years ago? Yeah, I'm not comfortable keeping the same terms that they had eight years ago and that's still not, I mean. That's where I sit with that, I'm just not comfortable with it.
Melissa, do we know for certain that they're not receiving more for this? I guess, cause I, I mean, the fact that we already sold them the property.
Yeah.
We don't even own it anymore.
No.
They're asking for our permission to transfer it, to sell, to sell it to somebody else.
Mm hmm.
I guess I was kind of assuming that they were making some money off the deal, which wasn't necessarily. Um, a problem from, from my perspective, because they. Bought it through the previous deal and it's their property.
Mm hmm.
This is really just about trying to make sure that.
That the cleanup is done.
Cleanup happens, but I, so I guess that would be my question, do, do we know that they're not getting more money for it?
Um.
They haven't told, we don't, we don't know what they're doing.
I mean, honestly, we don't know, but we do know that, that there's one point nine million worth of work. Um that they're required to continue doing.
Yeah, and and on this, they, they've given us. To the, the RDA estimates for the cost of the cleanup and those numbers vary by. More than a million dollars from the two different companies that they got it from. And they had wanted to be able to convey or sell the property to another thing without having. That remediation requirement. And so the, the leadership in the RDA was like, I, no. Absolutely not, this property does have to be remediated, so if you're going to sell it. You're also going to have to sell with it that obligation to get the remediation done.
Yeah, so, so I guess from the perspective of the fact that this is a, in some ways already a done transaction, I guess I'm trying to, so Becky, we. What you're saying is. You want them to. Come back and pay us more than they originally agreed to pay us in order to have the right to sell it? But I guess I'm, I'm not understanding what the, what the. The philosophy behind renegotiating the terms of an already executed deal is.
That would be the only reason. Why I would see it with the sunset clause, but at the same time. I'm not. It needs to be done. The costs to do it are a lot higher than they were eight years ago. I don't know what the process is to do that. If they're dragging their feet, if they're not dragging their feet. She said there is a million dollars difference between that and you've got like what, two million, just about two million left?
Well, but again, I guess what's the, what's the remedy? I mean, if you. If we reject this deal. Hall says they're not gonna remediate it because they don't have the money to do it. So are we gonna foreclose and take it back and we're gonna remediate it?
No.
Cause then that, that seems to me to, then we're gonna have the full cost of remediation plus the liability for owning it again. So it, it like, cause again, remember they're the owners. And they're coming to us and they're asking us for permission to transfer to somebody else. Which they have to ask for permission because they didn't meet the terms of the original mitigation requirement. So again, our, our choice seems to be to say no. And then force them to mitigate it themselves. Or take the property back and do it ourselves. Or allow them to transfer it, cause again, like Ra- like Rachel said, their original proposal was let us transfer it. And get rid of the mitigation clause. And our response was, no, it's gotta be mitigated. So we'll, we'll consider, we'll take forward a proposal if you. Report, if you, if the mitigation requirement stays. And the only thing that they're, that the buyer is getting out of it is credit towards. Their mitigation costs. They've got to, they've got to mitigate it even if it's more expensive.
Let me ask you this, what happens in three years if they do nothing?
Well, then we seek a declaratory judgment about the fact that they haven't. To force, we either seek court action to force them to mitigate it, since they signed a contract saying they would. Or then we take that, which would have been the same had they not.
Yeah, so we could be doing that right now, except they found a new buyer who is willing to do the mitigation. So we don't have to go through that process. Who is the new buyer, do we know? Yeah.
I think it's on there, it's, yeah, it's on there, it's on the. The item, yeah. No, it's on, is it on here or is it, it was on the item? No, go down to the bottom. Cause it's on the signature line, the ECP Ironton.
One way or another, if we end up with the property back, I would not recommend that we spend the money to mediate. We're gonna end up into, into another contract with another buyer for them to remediate, which is where we are now. We'll assign the contract to the new person. I think the motivation for this originally was we wanted to see Mountain Vista develop. We wanted businesses down there, but we didn't want to spend the money on remediation. We want to pass that on to somebody else. Paul was willing to take that.
Right, I get that, but if, and you've got case scenario, though. Are the terms the same and do we renegotiate terms?
Do the terms are the same or not?
They are, they are now, but if we took it back, we sold it to somebody else. Would that, would the terms be the same or would the terms change?
Today's financial climate, we have, may have trouble getting these terms.
So in other words, this is the best we can do. Right, is that what you're saying?
Yes, we have lots of developers saying we're putting pigs on hold because of the financial situation we're in right now. This is.
Seriously, you can take the loss, wait three years and see what happens if we have to take it back. If we went to court on something like this, would we be allowed only up to? That one point nine million or would we be allowed to say it's three million to remediate the thing? Would we, we'd be allowed the whole three million for remediation costs or just up to that two million?
We'd be capped at the, at the purchase price, cause we sold it three million dollars. They, with credit towards remediation costs, so if we, if we try to resolve this for damages. So if we, if we tried to resolve this for damages, our damage would be. The money we haven't received, um, through the remediation efforts.
And when they got these estimates on how much it would cost to remediate, what are those, are they under the two million?
I think they're under what's left, right?
Uh.
I don't remember, how much are the?
You know, I don't remember, I can send that to.
One was under and one was over.
Yeah.
So what kind of cost do we have after that runs out, let's say they take the one that's over? And they still have another million dollars or five hundred thousand or a hundred thousand, whatever that is in remediation costs. We don't have, we're just like, whatever.
No, cuz we, cuz the trustee is still in place and so we can still enforce the fact that they're required to.
How do we enforce that?
Go to court, seek a judgment against it. The specific enforcement. Or if we have made it in ourselves, then our damage.
So this has the potential to be in a can of worms if they don't meet their obligations.
Of course, yeah.
In three years.
It's the same can of worms that we have right now with all having that their obligation.
Have they just sat on it for a while or have they done their diligence to get?
They, they did mediation for several years, but for the last little bit, they've sat on it and they haven't been doing anything for the past. Two, three years, something like that, and our, our previous, um. RDA director indicated to them that that was okay.
Was there a sunset clause on the previous? Contract?
I don't think so, I think that, um. I think they're on, under an ongoing obligation to do the mediation, but I don't think there was a deadline.
Yeah, I, I don't remember for sure, I know that they were obligated to submit annually. Um, to go towards the, um, towards the debt, but as Rachel said, that hasn't happened for a few years.
So we did get the sunset clause on there, mom.
Yeah, so this is cleaned up to address some of the problems that we saw with the last one.
Okay, thank you.
So council thought in answer your question, the two quotes for remediation that they estimated were for three point two million and just shy of two point.
So in reality, what does, what do we see happening, can go with the two point one and then having additional costs occurring in the end? So they just.
It's possible, and that quote is from nearly a year ago, June of twenty twenty four, so I'm sure costs have got up. Even more since then.
And is this on, when's this on to vote, is it on tonight?
No, in a couple of weeks.
As I say, you know, maybe what we need to do is have Hall come in and say, since they're really the advocate, have them talk to you, cuz I guess what I was assuming. Uh, I was not assuming that they were walking away, I was, I was assuming that Hall is making money from the sale, they're selling it for more. And I, but I was assuming that when they came to us and asked. Will you let us transfer this without having any mitigation? The price was X. And when we came back and said, no, they have to commit to the mediation, that the price lowered to. Account for the fact that the, if the new buyer is gonna have to do the mitigation and that they're taking these estimates into account, so I think that. So I'm just, this, again, this is all assumption on my part, speculation, but I'm assuming that the new buyer is like, okay, well, one point nine is. Gonna come out of credits to the city and the other two hundred thousand is how much we lowered the price of whatever we're gonna pay Hall to get it. According to the representations from Hall, this new buyer is, has a complete development plan, well, they're anxious to get their hands on the property. So they can do their project and they're, and this is representations from Hall, I can't speak, it's the truthfulness of this. But they, you know, they're saying, when they came to us and said, just don't ma- don't make us put the mitigation clause in. Their assertion was, obviously they're gonna mitigate because they wanna build and they can't build unless they mitigate.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know why it matters if they make a profit or not, I mean, as long as the, as long as there's somebody gonna, who's gonna clean it up. And if they price it where it can't sell. Um, then that's on them, they still have to clean up according to our current agreement, so I mean. I, I think the, the issue is whether or not we're continuing with the obligation to mediate, so. And that, I don't know why it's our business to say that they can or can't make money while they're selling.
Yeah, tha- that, that was my concern with their original proposal was, I, what I thought was the worst case scenario was. We agree to let them transfer it without a mitigation clause because of these. Assertions that the other company definitely wants to, um, develop, and then once the other company gets a hold of it. For some reason, you know, their situation changes and they don't develop.
Right.
So they don't mitigate, but now they are the holders of it with no mitigation requirement and they sell it to somebody else. And the mitigation requirement is gone forever, and if there's ever a problem with the remediation. The chain of title is gonna come back to us, right, so that was why, from my perspective, the number one issue is just. The mitigation requirement has to stay. Everything else, I think, is a policy matter for the RDA board, I, from a legal perspective, it's just the fact that the remediation.
Do we have any, like, do we have any weight to say that Paul has to come up with? Like two million dollars in a remediation thing as well, and then it goes there first and then us, or? It, I'm concerned that these expenses are way more than what we have leverage for.
Then, I'm not sure I'm following. That idea. Like we asked them to put it in escrow and tell the other company has. I mean, a- again, my suspicion is, or at least the, Melissa can speak to this, she's had more conversations with Paul. I haven't had any conversation with Paul, so she's. But it seems to me that they're, you know, that their push and their proposal is. We don't have a plan for this, therefore we're not, you know, that if we say no. Then they'll just continue to sit on, they won't mitigate it cuz they don't have the money and they don't have a plan. And so if we say no, it's just gonna sit in the same condition until. Decide to sue them.
Which could end up being the case in three years anyway, some of the new people.
Well, it could be, but it seems to me like the risk of, like, if we say no, we definitely have to sue them, if we say yes. And the developer actually follows through with their plan, we don't, so saying yes at least gives us a chance.
Yeah, and if we ward the, the sale and they're not able to do it and we do have to sue them, then in some cases. Or in some way we brought damage onto ourselves. When there was an opportunity to mitigate the damage by doing this.
Yeah, that's a good point. Cuz as a legal principle, we have an obligation to mitigate our own damages, so. We would then, you know, if, if we're suing Hall, to Rachel's point, we're, we're in a fight with the court over whether. We actually get any money, whether the fact that we are damaged was our own fault.
Great. Thank you for putting in that clause, the sunset clause. That needs to be in there.
Alright, are there other questions for Melissa on this item? Okay, so you said this will come back in a few weeks?
Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah.
The sixth, alright, thank you very much.
It'd probably be useful for, I think, Melissa to know whether the questions that have been raised, like, do we need a hall representative here?
Do, do you want to ask more questions of them or have you been satisfied with our legal discussion that we've had now?
I'm satisfied with it, but it's fine.
Yeah.
It looks like we're in a bad situation because we had a bad contract in the first place, it probably shouldn't have had a sunset clause in it.
Yeah, I, I don't know that it was necessarily bad, but. If they didn't do, they, they went forward, they did over a million dollars of mitigation, that wasn't enough to completely remediate the property. Um, and then situations changed, they didn't wanna continue to, to do that and have that liability. So I am glad that they found somebody who's willing to take it on. Um, it was very important that we make sure that the requirement to, to complete the mitigation goes forward. The credit that they can get for that mitigation, though, is set with that older contract price now. So if the cost is higher to the new buyer to complete the mediation. They can only get credit for this portion of it and they have to bear the rest of it on their own. And Hall has just stepped back and they're, they're not doing that. But again, it saves the city or the RDA from having to take on that huge, huge liability again.
They would hold instrumental in redeveloping, um, this, as we develop this.
Yeah, he's done lots of good work, he's, he just doesn't need to do the, this parcel for, for his plans anymore. And did he, did he need to buy all of it together when he got it? Cuz he did do lots of good redevelopment.
Yeah, I just think he had very aggressive business plans back then, and again, you kind of rebate him that skill back.
Yeah. Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's an objection, we will now adjourn the RDA governing board a unanimous consent.